The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Aye.
Claudia, seven zero.
That concludes my agenda.
All right, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We'll restart in four minutes. I'd like to call the board meeting to order. All seven board members are present this evening. We're also joined at the table to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. To my far left is Sandy Heller, our board secretary. And to my right is Jamie Barbian, who is from West High School and president of the Inter-City Student Council. And it looks like we'll be joined later by Philip Balt from Preble. I'll just introduce him. He's going to be joining Jamie at the table. First, we have time for open, a public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board this evening? And I'll just, I'll just read this regarding our public engagement opportunities. "We provide two different opportunities during our meetings to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items All right, I'd like to call, oh gosh, the special board meeting to order? that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting law prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on as noted on the board's agenda. And I would entertain the first motion. Does somebody have it? During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers
I move that the resignations of staff is listed, be approved.
have had a chance to speak. And please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended.
Senator.
Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments such as clapping or cheering in response to Sandy? either public comments or statements made by board members are prohibited."
Claudia?
At this time, I don't have any forms or any indication that anyone wants to speak at
Aye.
this time, so we will move to our teaching and learning agenda, and that will be facilitated Warren? by Ed Dorff.
Aye.
And under item number one, discussion ends.
Sitnickel?
We have nothing, but we do have four items under two for discussion and public comment,
Aye.
the first being special education caseloads.
Becker?
Good evening, board members.
Aye.
Tonight, we are going to have Claudia Anderson, faculty of our services, and her team presented
McCoy?
information about caseloads.
Aye.
I believe, Claudia, are you going to introduce your team?
Sheldon?
Yes.
Aye.
I have with me tonight, excuse me, I have with me tonight on my left, oh, thanks.
Becker?
On my left over here, we have Nicole Schubert, who is the special education supervisor for
Aye.
the Preble quad.
Claudia?
Next to her, we have Nikki Sheedy, very confusing, who is the special education supervisor for
Aye.
the East quad.
Sheldon?
To my right, I have Patrick Dillhund, who is the supervisor for the Southwest quad.
Aye.
And Sean Manders O'Brien, who is the supervisor for the West quad.
Becker?
You might ask, where are my two associates?
Aye.
And unfortunately, Dara was at a conference on mental health. Dara Attendari is my associate for the East side. She is at a conference on mental health today. And Julie Harris, her daughter, made regionals in Gulf, and so she's a senior. She wanted to make sure that she was able to be with her daughter if she moved on to the state one, I believe, or the nationals or something. So nonetheless, I still have my four fabulous supervisors with me who are here to support me in our presentation. You ask, why are we here? What are we talking about? What we're going to talk about is in three steps today. We're going to talk about the history of where the caseloads came from, what our current practice is, and then the next steps moving forward. So let me give you some background. When I first got here in 2011, caseloads were supposed to be FTEs. They had started out being FTE-based, and we'll get into that later, a little bit later. An FTE is full, full-time equivalent, excuse me. Thanks, you can tell me what I'm doing wrong, right? Teachers also had all students on their caseloads. So there were students with emotional behavioral disabilities, there were students with learning disabilities, and there were students with cognitive, or what is now called intellectual disabilities, all on their caseloads. And they had caseloads eight, ten, twelve, fourteen. Majority of their time was being spent chasing down the kids with emotional behavioral disabilities. The students with intellectual disabilities were sitting, were being serviced as best as they could, not being able to reach or understand the content. And then the students with learning disabilities were getting pull-out time as needed. But I do want to take, say that there were some pull-out classes for the students with intellectual disabilities that were significant, but there were still students with mild and moderate cognitive, intellectual disabilities that were being on the same caseloads as the, all of those other students. So when I got here, I spent that whole year looking at what was going on, and the following year, we made some changes, where we added behavior focus rooms. We have since added autism focus rooms, so that those teachers can be trained more thoroughly. They have smaller class sizes. They can deal with the behaviors at hand and, and meet everybody's needs even better. So what was again happening back then was every time there was an issue with a student in a classroom, the special education teacher who was trying to teach students with intellectual disabilities or specific learning disabilities had to stop everything they were doing and run into a regular classroom and get that student out or de-escalate that student. And the class was being left with para. The teachers told me that that wasn't making any sense for them, and that's why I made the changes of having the more, the smaller settings for some kids with more significant needs. Around 2012 or '13, when I talked to HR, human resources, and there was really no staffing formula. So what had happened is if a student had come to a classroom, a particular student had come to a classroom, a para would, and the student needed extra help, a para was added. Unfortunately, there was not a tracking of, okay, now that student left the district, and so the para was taken out. So there was a lot of inequities across the district around who had what and who didn't have what. So we came up with a process. And what I decided to do was look at the process. DPI has two different processes that Nicole, Nikki will get into later, but there, one of them was going straight by numbers and one was going by the FTE. I chose to go with straight by numbers because it was the most simplistic one to understand. What you have up there is what we decided was going to, what the DPI had recommended and what we decided for elementary, middle, and high school cross-cat teachers. That would have meant elementary is twelve to fourteen, middle fifteen to seventeen, and high school eighteen to twenty. I attached in there a letter, the letter that, the latest letter that went out that, huh, we don't have a cursor, so I can't go down to that. But the staffing letter that was sent out to the teachers for last year, every single year since we've had this, we have put the caseloads out there for teachers to see. We also have-
Excuse me, our link is different. The link we have on Neptune has the district comparison chart.
The proper county staff comparison?
Yeah, right. Okay. We'll share. We'll share this. We put it in a different place, and I thought, when we were working on it today to finalize it, I think we, we changed some things, and I guess I didn't realize it wouldn't change in Neptune. I apologize. But as you can see, we had staffing ratios for the, that the letter went out to the different staff. You want to go back to the PowerPoint?
Those? If I could.
Yes, please.
Those, those staffing ranges are coming from the Department of Public Instruction-
Correct.
-reflecting best practice?
Correct.
Okay.
The thing, one thing to be noted is the Department of Public Instruction's recommended numbers for caseloads and/or FTE do not include the addition of a para professional in the classroom.
Okay. Just the teacher?
Just the teacher to student ratio, correct. Oops.
Question?
Uh-huh.
How did they come up with that? Do you know?
It was a whole, they take stakeholders' input, and they, they have, the state superintendent has a committee that has stakeholders from parents, students, teachers, advocates, all on the committee, and they give recommendations to the superintendent. For our specialty programs, there was not a guideline around that necessarily for the Department of Public Instruction. So we made some decisions based on what I had incurred, had in my previous district, and at the time, what this, my associate at the time, Amy Wachwitz, had at her previous district. And we came up with eight as a, for elementaries, for the autism focus, behavior focus, and intellectual disability focus classrooms. Ten for the autism behavior and ID focus, and twelve for the autism behavior and ID focus at the high school. Each program has one teacher and at least one additional para. Which the ID programs, for the most part, if they're severe, they have two adults in, two para professionals in them. The behavior and the autism classrooms generally have one additional para designated to that classroom unless it's students with significant autism as well as intellectual disabilities.
Claudia, as a follow-up, the caseload is different than the classroom. Yes, no?
I'm not understanding your question. Oh, cross-cat versus specialty programs. Correct.
Yes, yes. But is it, when you talk caseload, are we saying that that teacher will have twelve to fourteen students every class period? And then is this by class period or caseload or both?
Okay, sure.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep. So these programs, these programs, the specialty programs, are students that spend at least sixty to, at least sixty percent of their day self-contained in a special education classroom. So this, on these caseloads, these teachers have these students every single hour throughout the day. On the previous one, when you're looking at the elementary, the middle, and the high school cross-categorical, they do not have twelve to fourteen in a self-contained classroom all day. It's mostly students who are being pushed in to regular education classrooms, pulled out for their area of need, if it's literacy, if it's math, if it's behavior, whatever they're pulling them in. And some of them are going into the regular classrooms and supporting in the classrooms. So generally, they do not have those, those kids with them ever for all the whole day as a class.
We could probably use a little bit more explanation or clarification for that because we're talking apples and apples, both different kinds of apples here. Caseload, students that they're seeing in the classroom, we'll start with the premise of an elementary school, especially a teacher might be sitting, in fact, anywhere K-12, a teacher might be seeing and serving children who are not on her caseload, right?
Generally, that doesn't happen in elementary, but it does happen, it has happened in middle and high school, correct.
Well, I know it does happen. So what, what is the, what does it mean to have a student on your caseload? What does that mean to the teacher? There are twelve or fourteen students on my caseload. I'm the teacher. What does that mean? What's my responsibility to those specific twelve to fourteen children?
Sure. You need to make sure that all of their accommodations and modifications are shared with all of their regular education teachers. You need to be monitoring their progress and writing their IEPs, which are done at least annually.
Direct services, as you suggested earlier.
And someone's giving directed services. So in a high school in particular, there might be an English, somebody's in the English department, so they have a special education teacher attached to the English department. She sees all the students that go through the English, through her, the English class that she's supporting. If it's math, they go through all of the math, but they have to keep in constant collaboration and communication with one another, so that they ensure that they're nipping anything in the bud that's coming up.
And the, the case managers, the teachers who have the caseloads, are there some additional responsibilities they have for their students at transition points? Going from elementary to middle, middle to high school, high school, graduation, transition plans is what I'm talking about?
I guess I don't necessarily understand the question. When you're transitioning a student from elementary to middle or middle to high, generally, one of the teachers takes the lead on that and does a lot of the paperwork of sending the, the current IEP to the next, to the grade up, and then, and planning transition meetings for them to go from elementary to middle or middle to high. Once a student is fourteen, they have to have transition, a PTP, which is a post-sec, post-transition plan. So it's like a post-transit, I didn't put PTP on here, did we? Post-secondary transition plans, excuse me. And that's for any student fourteen and above. Every time you have an IEP, you have to do a transition plan with them.
Yeah, thanks. I was just trying to get, and you answered the question. I just wanted to have more information, more clarification about what, what it means to have a caseload, what, what those responsibilities are.
Sure.
So thank you.
And when I say that those other ones are self-contained, that is their caseload. They have eight students on their caseload.
Go ahead, Brenda.
So just so I'm clear, so you mentioned the language arts special ed teacher, the math special ed teacher, and you, are you talking about team teaching or not necessarily when you said the support? It's not?
There's different models out there that we could get into in a different day, but many times, it's team teaching. Sometimes it's, they're doing more of the para, the paras are going in and supporting for the team teaching, and the teacher is working on the interventions and closing gaps and the actual instruction in the self-contained class.
So if a, if a student is getting special education support in language arts and math, are they on two different teachers' caseloads? Or one of them takes-
One of them is their IEP teacher, and is the one who's like their case manager.
Okay, so that's the case.
But they might see the, the one teacher for English and the other one for math. Correct.
Right, but that student only gets counted once in a caseload.
Correct.
They've got an IEP teacher, and that's-
Correct.
Brenda?
So when you're calculating the FTE, are you using para time in order to calculate the amount of time that kids are in FTE?
Nope.
Nope? It's never counted?
We've not counted it, no. We've just gone strictly by the guidance, but we've added additional para time anyways.
Mr. Dorff? I just sent via email the updated slideshow for the board members and Dr. Langenfeld, and asked Sandy Heller if she could please update Neptune at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, we started having feedback probably about a year and a half, two years ago, from the teachers and the principals, that going strictly by numbers wasn't telling the story. They felt that we should go back to the FTE. And if you look at some of our schools, if you went strictly by FTE, which Nikki will go into explaining that, you could have had, you could have upward of twenty-some kids on your caseload. We didn't want to do that. So what we wanted to do was look at the FTEs and look at the, at the total numbers and still keep a maximum amount of numbers on the caseload, so that you didn't get too many kids, but you still kind of evened out the FTEs. So again, we looked at the student needs and supporting the whole student and making sure that their needs were being met.
So our, our current practice then was taking a combination, like Claudia said, of the DPI recommended caseload sizes and then their weighted FTE calculator, where it takes the student's FTE and puts them into a code A, B, and C, and gives them a weighted FTE number that's equivalent to, say, a general ed student without a disability. So you could have a student, a special ed student that could be equivalent to two general ed students within the classroom. So DPI is saying that their recommended number for a general ed class would be twenty-five to twenty-nine students. So then, looking at a special ed caseload, we want to keep around that same size.
Can I just explain what A, B, and, you want to explain A, B, and C?
So each code, A is the least restrictive environment code. So they're in the regular ed setting the most, zero to twenty percent of their day. Twenty-one to fifty-nine percent is code B, and then sixty percent or higher is code C. So here's the DPI link that breaks down the codes and the formula. If you go to the weighted FTE. Yep. Here's what we sent out to our building administrators last year when we were getting prepared to do our staffing. So you can see what the environmental code A, B, and C is, and their, the student's weighted FTE based on disability area and grade level. And that weighted number is, like I said, equivalent, what DPI is saying is equivalent to a regular ed student without any disability. Our next step was looking at the surrounding districts around us to see what their caseload sizes were, so we were working in comparison to them. Let's see. You look down on, this is from 2017, eighteen. They are working on updating it for the eighteen, nineteen school year. And you can see on row, I think it's nine, is the special ed to special ed student ratio.
It's the link on our page, too.
So you can see that we're one, we're the green column, column B, one to fifteen point seven. We're right within the range, more on the lower end compared, in comparison to the surrounding districts.
And then to be noted, that majority of the surrounding districts don't have specialty classrooms like behavior focus or intellectual disability focus or autism focus. Many of them, with the exception of Seymour, use, students with more significant disabilities go to civil hop. So they are not included in that, their ratios.
Then to calculate the full-time equivalency or the FTE, it's the total amount of special education services, amount of special education services that the student is receiving, the direct instruction from that special education teacher, divided by the total time in the school day or week, however that teacher is calculating it. And then that will come up with the FTE. A misconception when we moved to the FTE model was that the teachers were thinking, administration thought that the FTE was all pull-out classes. So we were moving away from the special ed students being in the general ed setting and wanting them to be in pull-out. That's a misconception. The special education services or FTE can be provided in both regular education and special education. So we put in a example of a service of all special education setting, and this particular student has a thirty-nine percent FTE, which would put them in co, environmental code B. Here's an example of a student that receives services in both special education setting and the regular education setting, and their FTE is eighteen percent, which would be an environmental code A. Next step is after the student FTE is calculated, we have to determine the weighted FTE based on their environmental code and their service FTE. that twenty-five to twenty-nine. And after we have that, we determine if it lands within that range, the caseload number range. So if you click on the example, actually, did an example caseload. So here, I just put, pulled out the disability areas, each student's FTE is in the middle column, and then what their weighted FTE is equivalent to. If you scroll down for me, please. So this teacher in particular has twelve students on their caseload. The total weighted FTE is twenty-six point three. So looking at that, they could carry up to fourteen, but based on their weighted FTE, we would say we want to monitor this and determine if they would need additional support or not.
Brenda?
So it's, and this, it is fair to say that caseloads change throughout the year. When is this, like, what is the threshold when you actually say we need to add more support? And how often does that happen?
We're in the process, we look at it multiple times in the year. We set our caseloads at the end, like in February of last year, and we all know that students move. Starting, we've spent the beginning part of the year waiting for Third Friday to come up, and we are at a point where we are moving staff to accommodate the needs in buildings, and the move will happen on Monday. I need everybody to understand that moving people after the school year has started has not been a pleasant thing for anybody, but we've made sure that there's been communications with the staff and everyone involved. The union has been involved, and HR has been involved, but we do, right now, we are finishing up the conversations with the people that are being affected and have an effective move date of Monday of the eighth. We would look again after Third Friday in January. Sometimes principals come to us and say, oh my gosh, I just got four kids from such and such a place. We would look at that and look at how we could manage to support that person.
And has it ever happened where you actually cannot add support? If someone's asked for it, has it ever been where you actually can't add support?
I don't, yeah, because we post positions throughout the school year, so, and in the past, what, if there was no positions, one of our staff covered for teachers, so-
So no?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
So administrative or supervisory staff covered if you were unable or not yet able to fill a teacher, or a teacher was taking longer than expected to fill?
We've had program support teachers cover. We've had psychologists cover. We've had retired people cover. We've had my administrative team cover. However, we can get that. Last year, I had staff in a school at least two months because we couldn't find a teacher. Now, if you're asking me, if people have asked for additional case, additional staff, and when we looked and examined all the needs, we didn't feel there was a need for it, yes, we may have said no to that.
How often does that happen? Are most, are ninety percent of requests granted? Are a lot of requests not granted?
Sir, say, I think it's more of a, it's situational.
And so that's why, if you're, if we're doing anything, we're, we're thinking about those individual situations. So in that situation, we will always look to exhaust all resources within a building before we look at potentially moving somebody. Um-
Kind of evened out the FTEs. So again, we looked at the student needs and supporting the whole student. And making sure that their needs were being met.
So our current practice then was taking a combination, like Claudia said, of the DPI recommended caseload sizes and then their weighted FTE calculator, where it takes the student's FTE and puts them into a code A, B, C, and gives them a weighted FTE number that's equivalent to, say, a general ed student without a disability. So you could have a student, a special ed student, that could be equivalent to two general ed students within their classroom. So DPI is saying that their recommended number for a general ed class would be twenty-five to twenty-nine students. So then looking at a special ed caseload, we want to keep around that same size.
Can I just explain what A, B, and C?
So each code, A is the least restrictive environment code. So they're in the regular ed setting the most, zero to twenty percent of their day. Twenty-one to fifty-nine percent is code B. And then sixty percent or higher is code C. So here's the DPI link that breaks down the codes and the formula. If you go to the weighted FTE. Here's what we sent out to our building administrators last year when we were getting prepared to do our staffing. So you can see what the environmental code A, B, and C is, and the student's weighted FTE based on disability area and grade level. And that weighted number is, like I said, equivalent, what DPI is saying is equivalent to a regular ed student without any disability. Our next step was looking at the surrounding districts around us to see what their caseload sizes were. So we're working in comparison to them. You look down on, this is from two thousand seventeen eighteen. They are working on updating it for the eighteen nineteen school year. And you can see on row, I think it's nine, is the special ed to special ed student ratio.
It's the link on our page two.
You can see that we're one, we're the green column, column B, one to fifteen point seven. We're right within the range, more on the lower end compared, in comparison to the surrounding districts.
And then to be noted that majority of the surrounding districts don't have specialty classrooms like behavior focus or intellectual disability focus or autism focus. Many of them, with the exception of Seymour, use, students with more significant disabilities go to civil hop. So they are not included in that, their ratios.
Then to calculate the full-time equivalency or the FTE, it's the total amount of special education services, amount of special education services that the student is receiving, the direct instruction from that special education teacher, divided by the total time in the school day or week, however that teacher is calculating it. And then that will come up with the FTE. A misconception when we moved to the FTE model was that the teachers were thinking, administration thought that the FTE was all pull-out classes. So we were moving away from the special ed students being in the general ed setting and wanting them to be in pull-out. That's a misconception. The special education services or FTE can be provided in both regular education and special education. So we put in a example of a service of all special education setting. And this particular student has a thirty-nine percent FTE, which would put them in code, environmental code B. Here's an example of a student that receives services in both special education setting and the regular education setting, and their FTE is eighteen percent, which would be an environmental code A. Next step is after the student FTE is calculated, we have to determine the weighted FTE based on their environmental code and their service FTE. We add all of the weighted FTE up per caseload and determine if the weighted FTE lands between that twenty-five to twenty-nine. And after we have that, we determine if it lands within that range, the caseload number range. So if you click on the example, actually did an example caseload. So here, I just put, pulled out the disability areas. Each student's FTE is in the middle column, and then what their weighted FTE is equivalent to. If you scroll down for me, please. So this teacher in particular has twelve students on their caseload. The total weighted FTE is twenty-six point three. So looking at that, they could carry up to fourteen, but based on their weighted FTE, we would say we want to monitor this and determine if they would need additional support or not.
So it's, it is fair to say that caseloads change throughout the year. When is this, like, what is the threshold when you actually say we need to add more support? And how often does that happen?
We're in the process, we look at it multiple times in the year. We set our caseloads at the end, like in February of last year. And we all know that students move. Starting, we've spent the beginning part of the year waiting for Third Friday to come up. And we are at a point where we are moving staff to accommodate the needs in buildings. And the move will happen on Monday. I need everybody to understand that moving people after the school year has started has not been a pleasant thing for anybody. But we've made sure that there's been communications with the staff and everyone involved. The union has been involved and HR has been involved. But we do, right now, we are finishing up the conversations with the people that are being affected and have an effective move date of Monday of the eighth. We would look again after Third Friday in January. Sometimes principals come to us and say, oh my gosh, I just got four kids from such and such a place. We would look at that and look at how we could manage to support that person.
And has it ever happened where you actually cannot add support? If someone's asked for it, has it ever been where you actually can't add support?
I don't, yeah, because we post positions throughout the school year. So, and in the past, what, if they were no positions, one of our staff covered for teachers, so.
So no?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
So administrative or supervisory staff covered if you were unable or not yet able to fill a teacher, or a teacher was taking longer than expected to fill?
We've had program support teachers cover, we've had psychologists cover, we've had retired people cover. We've had my administrative team cover. However, we can get that, last year I had staff in a school at least two months because we couldn't find a teacher. Now, if you're asking me if people have asked for additional case, additional staff, and when we looked and examined all the needs, we didn't feel there was a need for it, yes, we may have said no to that.
How often does that happen? Are most, are ninety percent of requests granted? Are a lot of requests not granted?
Sir, say, I, I think it's more of a, it's situational.
And so that's why, if you're, if we're doing anything, we're, we're thinking about those individual situations. So in that situation, we will always look to exhaust all resources within a building before we look at potentially moving somebody, look at maybe changing if it's secondary caseloads, or not caseloads, I said that, it could be someone's schedule, there's, there's multiple pieces. So to consider all levels first before we make that next step. So that's why I'm thinking that between the three of us here, we're, we're stumbling over a little bit. We literally try to consider all options. And our teachers, I can tell you, our teachers will work just as hard to say, if we do this, maybe we can get that additional time to support that student. Maybe it's a matter of condensing. Things change. Two kids may have transferred out earlier, and now we have new two kids transferring in. Things that we thought were solidified for what we had in November may need to be looking different in January. So we look through all those examples.
Mr. Kasha, can you share in all, how much we've increased special education staffing in the last two years?
Fourteen point five percent in the last three years.
Go right ahead. We have all the numbers.
Claudia, but could you speak to, I mean, the process that typically occurs and how you bring forward the requests and?
To the board?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, to the cabinet, sure.
Yeah, and the executive directors and talk about, and when needs come forward and discussions are held.
So even with the formulas we have, even though students, our student population of students with disabilities has decreased over the last three years, we have increased every single year for the last three years. And what we do is we, we do all of those, we exhaust all of our opportunities to rearrange staff and schedules and whatnot, help them to look at it and problem solve. The supervisors would come to Julia or Dara, One Last Chance, is there any ideas you have? We bring in program support teachers, provide ideas there. If that is not, if we still feel that there's a need, we would send a request to Vicky, and she would take that to Cabinet to review. Generally, I don't believe that Cabinet has ever said no to any of our requests. Many of them are related to making sure we're meeting the IEP, the minutes that are outlined in the IEP. On top of the staff that we've added, paras and teachers, we've also added, last year, we, at one point or another, and I won't say they were there all year long, but at one point or another, there were twenty-two students who had one-to-one paras with them throughout the school year. So clearly, we're trying to meet the needs of all the students and all the staff. We're responding, if a student is new and they came with a para in their IP, we're giving them a para right away until we can evaluate the situation, fading the paras when needed, documenting all of that. Is that what you're?
Yeah, if I could just, you know, I think one of the things that's really important is we're meeting the needs of children. And I think John and I have, John Kasha and I have talked about the importance of not only fulfilling the IEP, but our responsibility to support our children. And so to that end, again, like you said, some of our children are presenting some pretty high needs. And we, and we recognize that. And I know that Vicky will bring forward requests and we look, and obviously, I always feel, and I've said this to Vicky and I've said it to Claudia, if you're coming forward, I know that this has been vetted out and you've done what you needed to do to make sure that you're building capacity among staff because, to be able to deliver. But the fourteen-some percent, I mean, it's millions of dollars. It's not like it's, it's, you know, it's a lot of staff. And it's not, not for not wanting to do it. But it, but it is a very important balance to make sure that the children have what they need and the teachers are well-supported. But sometimes the support also needs to come in professional development as well because these are, these are often sometimes being presented. When you talk case by case, Pat, I think about just the unique needs of each and every child. It doesn't always look the same to support that child.
And we've also increased our use of outside agencies supporting the students when we feel that they are to a point where they're endangering the safety of themselves or others. And even a placement like Menoka isn't appropriate. We've got currently, I think we have eleven students at Advocates for Healthy Transitional Living right now, and about to have two students at Mock Village Program. And one student at. Curative or, Curative Connections? Oh, Curative Connections. And then, yeah, one's getting a robot, which is for another day. So John, do you want to speak to, I don't know if it matters, the dollar amount, but?
Well, this is definitely, folks said it's six million dollars over the last three years, fourteen point five percent. This year alone, an eight percent increase, last year, five point five percent. So short term, that's, that's the commitment that's changed over the last two to three years.
So I guess my, my question was a little bit more specific about how often, how often teachers request extra support and are told no. That are told, no, we think you're fine. And I'm not, I'm not, my goal here is not to, you know, have you tell me that, you know, two-thirds of the time we agree and so how you're letting down teachers? No, I mean, sometimes teachers are going to make a request for something that is not needed, right? That's why we have, that's why we have some, and I know that there are some judgment calls that are made. At the same time, I would think if we routinely had teachers coming forward saying they need some relief, paras, et cetera, and we're, we're being told that we didn't have it available, then I think that would be, you know, I think probably most, most of the time, teachers are making a, you know, a sensible request and not trying to, you know, not trying to get off easy. If they did want it, did want to have it easy, they would choose a different line of work, obviously. So just how often are we, how often are requests being answered with, with no?
I can personally only, over the last number of years that I've been here, I can't even think of a handful of them.
So all the, almost all of the teacher requests that come to you go to Cabinet?
I don't generally get teacher requests, they usually come from the principal who's vetted it out. If there's a teacher who had a, well, right now, we're working with a teacher who is concerned about their caseload, we're looking at options for that teacher going to the principal to say, I think that this needs to be reorganized so that this person has less kids on a caseload, this one has more on a caseload. I think that's generally the way it goes. I don't, if teachers, I don't even recall any teachers coming directly to me, except for itinerant. Christina?
So do you collect that data year over year in terms of inquiries about additional support? And whether or not you're, that fits your, fits your, you know, your assessment? Or if it doesn't, like, do you, do you carry that data and you analyze that?
We keep the data of who and where we added staff.
But not who gets?
Which I don't even, like I said, I, I can't even recall any of that, any of them.
Well, I'm, I'm just also curious too, like, if somebody says, I would like to look into this, and then you say, no, there's, that my assessment says we don't need additional support, it would just be interesting. I'm just curious if you had that data, I just, it would be interesting to see when classroom teachers ask how often that is an actual need.
Right. I believe part of the reason I think we are struggling with that specific type of a question of when do you say no? Is because by design, our nature is to look for solutions. So if you have an IEP which is directing us with a specific need, and because that relates from, this is the child's ability, strengths, weaknesses, that goes to that next part, that we have goals, it directs us to services related to those needs. And so because of that need, we're looking for solutions to provide them what's required.
Sure.
And that's why I'm saying need repeatedly because we want to go there. We, we often stumble between, we all could benefit from some additional things, but it's the need. So through that conversation, as an IEP teacher, to being all these many roles leading up to here today, I can tell you that we truly try to vet out options first to get the need covered. Our goal is to get those needs covered. So I find it hard to say that I've said no to them because I'm always in the process of try, can I find a solution? And, and that's why it gets those many pieces of, can we adjust during this? So that's why I'm stumbling over this to tell you how many we've said no to.
Yeah, and my question.
It's never a hard, it's never a hard no. We always go in and find some sort of solution. It may not be exactly what the teacher or the principal was originally wanting, but there is at the end always a resolution that comes to fruition, and that's just how it goes.
Yeah, my question isn't because I don't think you're filling that need. I'm just curious how, it would be interesting if that data was there to say, this happened and this often this happens, or this often this is what happened, so.
We can do that moving forward.
If you can insert one-on-one para request and quantify that data if you wanted to see that to the measurable data this time next year.
Rhonda?
I'm just wondering, without that kind of data, how you would actually look to ask for more support from the district or the board? If you didn't actually have that data, how you would maybe come and ask for more funding?
That could drive that.
Right, I mean, do you know what I mean? So if you don't really know where your needs are, or if you, inevitably, I would vote to give you as much support as I could every single time I can. But if that data isn't collected, how many times you're actually asked to have, for something that maybe you have to, like you said, find ways to fill and finagle around, then how do you really know what your needs are financially or fiscally?
Let me, let me just, if I could, kind of from a practitioner point of view, albeit several years removed, there are a number of levels of requests here. And if we were looking for data, I guess we'd have to say, at what level do you want, you want that? Do you want the, the data coming from when the requests go to the ultimate decision-makers at Cabinet? Or at the, at the first level, at the teacher level? If we start at the teacher level or the classroom level, I, I think what's been alluded to here is that within the school, my experience has been the teachers are going to try to find solutions. The teachers and the principals are going to try to find solutions, shifting, shifting caseloads, if that's the right term, shifting responsibilities to try to make sure that, not sure, sorry, try to make sure, to make sure, to ensure that kids' IEP needs are being met. So something might come up as a request for more, or a, a statement that more services or more help is needed, but they're able to figure that out internally. I mean, that's, that's at the closest level to the, to the work itself. So a request has been made, but they've solved it themselves in the school, and that happens multiple times. Now, take it to the next step. If the teacher comes to the learning assistance team or whatever they have in the, in the buildings, what's done at that point? Does it move on from there? So I, I think to, to ask the question about what's the data, we have to talk about at what level? Going from the building to downtown, or from downtown to upper administration, you know, so.
Sure.
At the lowest level, it's going to be very, very hard to dig that out because people are addressing those things in-house. Go ahead, please.
So it's entirely possible that, is this, is this impossible to say that they figured this out in-house because they don't really feel confident about getting it outside of their purview? So maybe they just figured it out because it's easier? Maybe it's more of a hassle to actually go into the next level and ask for help?
I don't think that's accurate, I don't think that's fair. It may happen, Rhonda, but, you know, again, my, my experience is, these folks are working very, very hard to get these things done. And their mindset is to make these things happen.
And I agree with you, but I'm just, again, I'm a voice, and I'm using my voice to share a voice. So when that does happen, I think that's the concern. And so based on that, I wouldn't, and what we're talking about collectively, I'd wonder, how do you determine when you need to ask for more funding? What is it that actually happens? Because that's, at the end of it all, that's what I'm interested in, is when do you know that you need to ask for more?
So when their numbers are over the number that we recommend and their FTE is over the recommended FTE, we would look to ask for support.
And so, do you have that, do you have that data?
Like how often that happens?
I have all the ads, correct, yes. And I also have, and maybe if what you're alluding to, because I'm not totally understanding what you're alluding to, because majority of our asks have been yeses. But if, if you're looking at when people are asking for one-to-one paras, there used to be this practice of they said they wanted a para, they got a para. What we're asking for now is what we ask for when we ask for additional, any additional support in reading and math, we ask for the data. What have you done? What data have you collected? What have you tried? We bring in autism-focused persons, if that's the, if the need is autism, we bring in the academic, or the behavior. Focus program support teachers help them to understand how to examine the data, how to stay on a, try an intervention, how to document that intervention. And once that's all done, and they've done that, and they've provided me with the paperwork, one-to-one paras have been assigned. And as I said, twenty-two over the last, last year alone. When I first got here, I think we had two one-to-ones. And no documentation of that, because when a student left the district, the para just stayed there. So we're trying to do a better job of that. If there's something, idea you have for us to make teachers feel more comfortable coming to us, I'd be more than happy to take that suggestion.
Well, I'm just, I mean, and I'm just looking at also the people that have left and resigned. So there is a fair amount of that. So I'm just curious about how this all works, it seems really seamless.
There's a fair amount of people who have resigned in many of the districts around us also.
And I, and I, and I agree with that, and I know that. So I'm just wondering, in general, how we are approaching this to obviously take care of that in some form as well as the kids?
Well, Pat's going on to the, he's got that in his presentation, though.
If, if this applies, I'll just say, your, your question may be, if we can click, like, I have control this one now. Going on to this next step, the next step. So really, maybe, Rhonda, this is where you're alluding to, right here, is that, the fact is that we are aware that we have this process, we've been ongoing. And you can hear from my description how I think we have a sense of how we perceive. We also are acknowledging, though, that there, there's a need out there for more. And so to create a building administrative team to make sure that we have the principal voice, to make sure that that's representing the classroom voice. We as supervisors are in the building, we are having conversations with our teachers and supporting them. We are part of those, as I say, part of those solution teams, looking for those solutions teams. And we know we need to do some additional work. I think that's what this is acknowledging, is that, again, I'm bringing what I know, right? But I also acknowledging what we don't know, in other words, and try to move it forward. So our goal is to get that team going. And the second part is that ongoing additional coaching of the staff. What specifically is changed from DPI process, which is affecting our process, is this whole conversation around disability-related needs. That is where we are trying truly to have our conversations about that individual need, look at strengths, weaknesses, services, to get to that need, and then how do we go to the next step? And that truly, that conversation should be happening first. And that's why, or that's how it equals to that FTE. It should be based on what the need is, and that's what we're going forward. And I can tell you from the teachers that I talk to, this is where they truly feel their professionalism comes into play, which is writing that IEP, knowing the family, knowing the child, creating that IEP, putting it all together and going forward. And that's at the school level, that's a teacher-based level, those IEPs, that's, that's there. So, and that comes to the FTE, which eventually comes forward to this larger conversation we're having about staffing, when we put it all together for one staff with an FT, a caseload of, you know, twelve to fourteen, or things like that.
I would say that, you know, what you just said there reflects back, what I was speaking of before, Rhonda, was my experiences. And that's not to say that, you know, what you're talking about doesn't exist, I'm not suggesting it at all. But if we have pockets of that, that's, that has to be brought forward. If teachers are believing that their needs aren't being represented more specifically, more importantly, the kids' needs aren't being represented and brought forward, that really needs to come out because that's not okay. And again, I was speaking to my experience and seeing teachers problem solve around a lot of these things, and I believe that's still going on, but, you know, if there are those pockets, that needs to be brought forward. Brenda, you had to hand it before, do you have a comment?
No, I mean, I might have.
Oh, forgot it. Andrew?
Lori, can you pull, pull up the current GIVAP's caseloads also?
Andrew's got a.
So I guess another, another point too that I guess is important is I would want to make sure that requests that are coming forward, whether it's from, from teacher to principal, from principals to, to you, I'm not, I'm not saying that or suggesting that the answer would be yes all the time. I'm not, I'm not saying that, or suggesting that the answer would be yes all the time, but I think, I would, it would be my hope that there wouldn't be too much, how do I put it? Self-censoring of requests. Um, boy, I know they're having a hard time already filling some of these positions. I can do it. We can do it here. We're not, we're not going to ask other, other people a very, um, I, I see it in my line of work in a much, in much less serious of matters, but, you know, hey, why didn't you call me? We could have helped you out here. Oh, no, you're, you're busy, your time's valuable, you, I know that so-and-so place needs more help, that kind of thing. And it's hard to, I don't know the, I don't know the solution to it, but I would, I would be surprised if it, I would be surprised if it didn't happen. Now, if, if it turns out what truly, you know, if people truly felt that to really do what we need to do, you know, we needed forty or fifty percent more staff, we might have to make a decision of, okay, we can't, we can't do that, but maybe where can we meet, you know, the most urgent need? That's my, I guess my biggest worry is what, what are the questions that aren't, aren't getting asked, that are getting self, self-censored, if you will, one of those earlier levels?
So, I do know with our four supervisors now that we have on, in place, they're looking at caseloads every month, and they're looking at the numbers, and they're looking at the FTEs. Um, and while we were doing this Third Friday thing, there is a, one of our schools, they said, and they generally say this to us all the time, no, no, we can make it work, we can make it work. Because we want, we're looking at the whole district as a whole, we're telling them, you can't make it work. We're not going to let you make it work because we're giving you more staff. And they're appreciative when we give them that, but they're, you know, we also have principals, we have teachers that all do feel that, oh, we can make it work, we can make it work, there's bigger needs, there's bigger needs. No, their FTE shows that they need more support, so we're giving it to them.
And I hope it's not just the FTE, I would hope that in the critical examination of behavioral and, and learning data, that leadership is making those determinations as well. And, I, I like what you said there, you know, you're looking at these things and saying, no, you do need help, and bringing it in. But, I mean, that would be my, my response to, to the question you asked, that, you know, that it's incumbent on the leadership by looking at what's going on in the classrooms, again, looking at the data, direct observation to, to make those determinations, um, to overcome that, that, you know, self-censoring that you talked about, it shouldn't be happening.
I think that it's so crucial, in my position, that, I think it's so crucial for myself to be in a position where I'm being very purposeful about my relationship building with this building-level staff and that leadership, so they feel comfortable to share that with me. So, I think that's one of our goals, is always to have strong culture and climate and trust, so that we can have that very open and collaborative communication.
That's good, that's good to hear that you're doing some, you know, some push down, since, because I think a lot of, they're just probably going to be, especially in the profession like teaching, there's just always going to be a lot of, we'll, we'll take care of it, go help, you know, so, all right, thank you.
I have one more question.
We'll go to Michelle, and then Brenda, and then Rhonda.
Just, just as a, as a follow-up, um, you know, I think one of the opportunities that, and Ed, you spoke to it very well, is that I, more and more often, um, central office is really going in and doing direct observations when requests are made. Um, I think because of the unique needs that children are presenting, even though we have fewer students in the district right now who are receiving services, there are many times where, you know, your initial response is what we used to do, um, you know, whether it be a one-on-one para or whatever, but even going in and looking more deeply, because sometimes the issues are even greater than what people have seen. So, I mean, I have really respected and appreciated, sometimes teams have gone over with the executive director and the principal, and a whole team has gone in and several observations to make sure that we have the right resources and support. Um, so I know a lot of care goes into those decisions when you want to make sure that the fit is the best. Um, as, as a follow-up, though, with the one-on-one para, um, the con, the conversation in, in sitting at the IEP table many times in my years as principals, we talked about the one-on-one para being a pretty restrictive measure.
Correct.
Um, are you, are you, is that still part of the conversation, and why that would be? So that sometimes it sounds like a really good idea, and people may not know how that works for a student to have that one-on-one.
Right, because when you have a one-to-one, generally, um, all natural relationships with peers is absent because there's always this adult around. Um, so one of the things that we ask the teams to do while they are getting the one-to-ones is to have, give us their plan of what they're going to do to teach the behaviors, so that the student can begin to fade the one-to-one support, so that by the time they're in high school, you're not walking around with a body next to you twenty-four seven. So, that is part of the IEP, is the plan to fade.
Thank you.
But I think that Michelle sort of points out always the point. I think Michelle makes a very good point, though, that we have two guardrails, the students' needs, but then also least restrictive environment, and that, you know, the, the best answers are usually between there, because more, it becomes more restrictive, and then that's not best for the children either. So, that's always the thoughtfulness as we've got through that process.
Brenda?
As I listen, I'm just struck by the fact that I don't think that this can ever become a numbers game and a, a game of, of just pure data. I mean, I think you've put a lot of data to it with, with your FTE calculations and, and all of that, which is really good to hear, because that gives you that, the, the catch, so to speak, of, you know, constantly evaluating those numbers. But the, the rest of what you do is just an art of, of case by case, teacher by teacher, student by student. Um, and I, and I appreciate the work you've done to try to, um, improve your ability to do that part, because that part's harder than the, than just crunching numbers. And, um, so just being in classrooms and getting to know teachers and students, I think that that, to me, that sounds like, you know, the best way to improve that, that part of the job that you're doing, so, thanks.
Rhonda?
Um, so I just wanted to say that I had visited, uh, West and Lombardi autism focus programs, and I just couldn't get over how much of a game changer you can tell that these programs are for kids. And I, I just can't say enough about that. Um, I'm not sure, are these located in all of the middle and high schools right now?
Um, we're moving to the, or that, um, we're trying to build the capacity. So, we have them at Lombardi, Southwest, West, Franklin, Washington, and East. And Preble is, and are they starting this year? Oh, Edison started this year, not Preble. Because it's, you have to build the teacher capacity also, to be able to understand how to deal with students on the spectrum, and, um, we, we've put a lot of effort and a lot of work into working with students with autism in our district over the last five years.
It was, it was really interesting to hear, because they actually had me come in, and I, they presented to me, and they all discussed about-
Students did, correct, yes.
Um, it was great. They talked about how this actually has changed their life, their school experience, their student achievement is, um, increased, their behaviors have decreased. It was just, it was great.
Christina?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. My question about data is not to say that there's not an art to this work that you all do, but I do think it's important that when, you know, like I love this last step here, you know, bringing teachers to the table, your budget is increasing, you're thinking about systems, you're thinking about how you improve. You know, form follows function, and as you build that out, I think we should always be thinking about how we can improve our systems, so that we can integrate flexibility to be, have a, a creative lens to the work that we do. But if we want to really think about teacher input and sort of rising those voices to the top, um, data is a really important piece that tells us, can tell us something that we may not see. Um, so I would just encourage you, as you are thinking about how you build out this administrative team, to, to really give, uh, these teachers a voice to what they would like, how they would like to use data, and how they could use that in a way that's really meaningful, that really enhances their work. So, I just wanted to be clear with why I was asking that.
No, I understand. I had it written down as a note to figure out a way to do that, too. I think, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Do you have any other questions?
Anything more?
I just wanted to put your my, uh, your attention to the attachment that was on slide, um, four, I believe it was, where we actually built out, showed you the caseloads. We left the names of the students of the teachers off, and we left the names of the schools off, but we do, in our own possession, have the, those on here. And as you can see, there are no, there are no staff members that have anything higher than six. There's one, the teacher at Preble has twenty-two, and we're looking at working at East, excuse me, working with her, because she's the one who won't take those kids off her caseload, so we're having to nudge, nudge her a little bit. But she's the repo teacher in the department chair, and she's very protective. Um, the ones that have sixteen, those are the ones where you're going to know that we're moving to add t, uh, support over to those schools. So, um, we, we do constantly look at the numbers, but I, I think at, at a previous board meeting that was, it was said that there was twenty-three on a caseload, I even checked my itinerant kit, teachers' caseloads, and I don't have any of them with twenty-three on a caseload. So, if somebody does have that, I, we would need to know about it. I mean, I encourage them to come forward. The only thing we could have thought was that a principal rearranged and said, you're, you know, we, we staff based on the FTE of the whole building, say, all the cross-cat teachers should have about this many students. Um, it might not work out because of grade levels, so we encourage anybody who's, um, if they do have something like that, they think their caseload's unfair, please, please figure a way to get that to us, even if it's through a board member, however, we can do that.
I think it's important, and this was very, very important, that this discussion and the information that was shared, that we are clear on, um, the definitions, caseload, class size, FTE. Um, it's a very, very involved process, obviously, and, uh, always moving. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question, sorry. Um, a lot of professional development goes on. Can you just provide, I, just either a high level now, or just put it in an update? I know there's a lot of professional development going on for our teachers, and I think that's a really critical part that we haven't talked anything about, and I don't, maybe that's for another time?
Might be for another time anywhere. We were looking at-
Because we do specific on academics, behavior, autism ID, yes.
It's just even having that somewhere so that people could look. I think it's really important.
I think Ms., you're collecting that, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, perfect. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to shift gears now. Uh, next item we have is International Baccalaureate Mathematics, English, and Business Management Course Essential Documents. I see Mr. Freeze is working his way up to the table now.
He's bringing Dr. Khan with him.
Everybody, nice to see all of you. We're a little shorthanded tonight, as you can tell, so I'm playing the part of Mr. Magus and myself. But, um, we appreciate the opportunity to be here to share with you a couple requests for governance approval with some curriculum documents. Um, tonight, we are here on behalf of the West team, it's actually homecoming week, so, uh, they, they weren't able to join us. They'll be here in a couple weeks, though, for an International Baccalaureate Progress Monitoring Report, so around voting time, if there's things that we need to circle back around, they will be present for that. This is a governance request related to our IB curriculum work. The IB, um, as you may know, updates and overhauls curriculum occasionally, um, based on changes internationally and, and looking at core competencies. This month, we bring forward a request for changes to the IB math course offerings based on a, pretty much a complete overhaul of what the IB will allow schools to offer in future years. In addition, uh, West is requesting to change its IB English offerings based on an analysis of recent changes by the IB, and in line with its vision for courses that will be appealing, um, appealing to students and rigorous for its students. Finally, West is proposing to introduce an IB business offering that will increase the overall diploma program options, as well as link to the efforts associated with the BayLink Manufacturing Program. So, tonight, Dr. Eric Khan is here to elaborate a bit further on the purpose and intent of this request and provide any additional details. As always, we welcome your questions.
Um, the, as far as the math goes, there are two courses that the IB, uh, program is proposing for replacement, or will be implementing for replacement, um, starting next year. The, the first course is referred to as Applications and Interpretations, which, um, they aim as, uh, being beneficial to students who are pursuing further studies in post-secondary in economics, business, um, the social sciences. And then, the other course is, uh, Applications and Interpretations, which is more of preparing students for further advanced mathematics, um, in getting into STEM-related fields. Uh, in the English, um, the West team is proposing to retire the current IB English literature course and replace that with IB English Languages and Literature. Uh, that course still does literary analysis, but also includes non-literary text in the analysis, focusing on, uh, things such as language, culture, and context, and its impact on communication. And then, um, Mike also went over the proposal for Business Management, which would broaden the IB diploma program courses beyond the traditional core areas into the first, um, CTE area in the Business Department.
Brenda?
The, the math classes that you just listed, how do, what, um, what other, do they take the, the traditional math? And then these are IB sort of high-level critical thinking math, or, or do these count as some of those more traditional, like algebra, geometry, algebra II kind of classes?
Sure, um, they go traditionally through algebra, geometry, and algebra II, and these are more of the replacement in the traditional pathway for things like, um, precalculus and then calculus, depending on what, how they exactly line up. What we don't know yet, because these courses are so brand-new, is what they mean as far as post-secondary transfer, just because the post-secondary institutions haven't weighed in yet on, on how those courses will be evaluated.
So, those are, I mean, they cover the, the content for precal and calculus?
Generally the same content, yes.
It's just sort of a different approach to teaching it?
Correct.
Thanks.
The, the two Applications and Interpretation classes, the one is standard level, and the one is higher level, are those sequential, or do you take one or the other, not both?
You would take one or the other. It depends on, um, what your emphasis is when, when you're pursuing the IB diploma.
Anything else? Andrew? I guess, um, so you're, you're changing, um, with the changes to the, the math course, that's not going to affect the diploma path at all?
That's a, it would be the same, um, uh, if I'm understanding your question correctly, this is, the, the current courses will not be offered by the International Baccalaureate at large, and this is the replacement. So, as they, as they tease out the exact expectations for school districts, and the sequencing of how things are transitioned out of, um, we would be able to navigate that. But this is a universal change that we don't have a say over, per se, it, it's a matter of, this is the new course that they're offering.
So, I, I see, you're changing one, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I misread something. The IB is changing its math course from one thing to another, it's not, um, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move that forward then.
Thank you.
You staying here for the next one?
Yeah, I'll stay.
Course conversion, Advanced Biology to Advanced Placement Biology.
Um, this also is very, um, well, I won't say very straightforward, but it, this does not involve bringing forward new curriculum documents for you to approve, rather, it's a request for you to approve the offering of Advanced Placement Biology, uh, to replace the Advanced Biology, which has historically been offered. As you may know, um, this conversation has taken place in various circles around the district for a number of years. A lot of people have asked, why have we not made Advanced Placement Biology an offering? It's generally a pretty accessible course for students pursuing the Advanced Placement. Last year, the Interest City Student Council asked about it, um, in particular in the spring. Our teachers have spent a number of years doing curriculum crosswalks and gradually aligning the Advanced Biology course towards that, and we're ready to make that recommendation, that move. So, we're, we're requesting a course conversion, essentially. And, um, as you can see, we did include some budgetary requests associated with the professional learning that would be associated with it. Um, at this time, uh, the selection of resources has not been made. Um, it's important that the staff attend the IB, or sorry, the AP Summer Institute to understand any curricular changes that may be coming with Advanced, or with AP- to understand any curricular changes that may be coming with Advanced, or with the AP Biology and, and currently approved list of, of books. Um, so that is the, uh, that is the recommendation. And Alyssa can't be with us tonight, I apologize, so if there's a heavy-duty science question I may need to defer for, um, and get back to.
Uh, can you ballpark how close the, the current Advanced Biology is to the AP?
Yes, I can. Um, I, it was ranging around like sixty-seven to seventy-two percent of curriculum coverage. Uh, we do have a handful of students each year that have opted to take the AP Biology test. Um, last year, five students chose to take it. Two choo- two students earned, uh, AP score of a three or higher, which would typically transfer to college credit. Um, but we've had, um, we've had, uh, between a hundred and a hundred and forty students in the district enrolled in Advanced Biology each year, so by ensuring that the curriculum is aligned, then they would be better prepared, and we anticipate more students would pursue that for college credit consideration then.
Andrew?
So, then, um, like, what would, I, I realize you, I'm sure you don't have the whole, I wouldn't expect you have the whole list here, but that seems like to be a lot of un- a lot of uncovered material that we're gonna have to, right, fit within the same timeframe? So you're saying about seventy percent overlap?
Uh, uh, initial-
Cause that's a lot, right? So what's missing?
I, I don't have the exact topics that are missing. We have a crosswalk, but the, the staff worked with Alyssa in preparation of submitting this request, and so they worked out, and they're, they've got, um, they'll be working on a core syllabus based on the, the AP that has to be submitted to meet approval so that they can ensure that coverage occurs over the course of, um, the requisite time allotment for teaching.
I presume you'd have to drop some topics, too, then, cause you, it would be diff- challenging to just cram thirty percent more material into an already rigorous course.
Right, because the, the purpose and intent of the course we're asking you to vote on would be to introduce AP Biology, and we would not run Advanced Biology anymore. So, there's a very close piece, and it's just been kind of inching towards offering it. The downside of Advanced Biology is it doesn't offer our students anything right now. It's not aligned with a, a college equivalency, it's not aligned to the AP. This would allow us to offer that alignment and post-secondary acknowledgement, and the staff felt like they're ready to make that, that move, so.
I mean, of course, I support something that's gonna be of more value to, more value to students. I guess I, I'd be interested if it doesn't involve significant time. There's probably a document floating around somewhere about-
Mm-hmm.
What are some of the topics changed? I'd just be interested in knowing a few, a few changes without spending a lot of time on it, just email would be fine.
Yes, I can get that for you. Thanks.
Christina?
This isn't really more a question, but more of a comment. I, I think it's exciting to hear the numbers of the kids who, students who could take the AP exam, and considering how many more, uh, students would be interested in doing that, but, uh, thinking about equity, I just think we should be thinking ahead, too, about how this, the district could be supporting students who may not have the financial means to be able to. Those tests are expensive, right? I mean, I don't know what they run now. I remember they were expensive when I was in high school. So, it's just a comment, rather, that that should be something that we should be considering is how we can support them. If more students are taking it, then that could be a financial barrier.
We do that normally?
That's correct, yes. If, if you qualify for free-
So that we could build that-
But I think making sure that students understand upfront, and so that they, you know, we don't want them not signing up for a course or not thinking, "I have AP potential." We have, in fact, um, engaged in something called the AP Diagnostic a few years ago to do kind of an equity audit on, um, access and enrollment in our AP courses, um, and, and looked at best practices according to College Board that help you address matters of equity. Um, and, um, Judy, who works with the secondary schools in her previous district, had gone a, undergone a substantial equity audit relative to Advanced Placement, um, access. So we're, we're excited to kind of compare notes to see if our strategies and strategies she's familiar with might help our, our, our schools also address exactly what I think you're asking about, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Brenda?
I just forgot what I was gonna ask. Oh, so this AP Biology class will function the same as Advanced, meaning they take regular Biology first and then Advanced Placement?
Yes, yeah. There are, there are pre or core requisites, um, related to-
Okay.
-science work.
Cause I'm, at one point, I don't know if it's still the case, you could take the AP Physics class without taking regular Physics.
Right, there was a way to, um-
I mean, just cause one was covered in the courses, yeah.
Yeah, instead of, instead of going physical science, biology, chemistry, we have freshmen that start with-
Biology.
Biology, chemistry, and then by taking AP Physics, it addresses those, um, those more, they, they, they address those advanced topics that would've been touched on partly in the freshman years.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, move that forward.
Thank you.
And our last item, uh, full-time and part-time open enrollment policies and rules.
So I'm asking Mr. Freeze to stay since he, um, implements and administers these policies. Uh, we are bringing forward changes to Policy 423, Rule 423, Policy 424, Rule 424, and Policy and Rule 425. Uh, it seems like we are routinely bringing these policies to your attention because of the numerous legislative changes to these policies. If you recall, we, um, brought changes to you after the, uh, most recent state budget was passed, which reenacted part-time open enrollment, which caused us to get rid of a number of, uh, policies that Mr. Freeze and his department work on. As a result of the legislative changes, the DPI has enacted emergency rules to implement those legislative changes, which has caused us, again, to have to revise these policies. Um, as, since we've had to revise the policies, we took the liberty to put the policies in our standard format, which is the definitions in the policy versus the rule, and including a purpose statement, and just aligning it with our standard format. The most notable change i- and, and really, it's not a change for here's in Green, for here, us here in Green Bay, because we are already doing this, um, but there is now legislation regarding students who, um, open enroll out through the full-time open enrollment option, and then request to take up to two classes in another district. So we had already accommodated our students who had, um, most notably, open enroll out to probably a virtual school, and then asked to take two classes back here in the district. There was no mechanism to do that, but we had made arrangements with, uh, the schools where they had open enrolled out to take two classes back here in Green Bay. Now, the, um, part-time open enrollment rules provide a structure for doing that and provide, um, a fee transfer for doing that. Previously, we were entering into shared services agreements with these, uh, school districts. We won't have to do that going forward because there is a fee transfer or fee mechanism for doing so. So we had to adjust the policies to do that.
Okay. Questions? Okay, move that forward, too.
Thank you.
And that concludes Teaching and Learning Work Session.
Great, thanks, Ed. Next, we have Organizational Support Work Session. That'll be facilitated by Andrew Duckert.
Could you, uh, recess for a little bit?
Sure. Come back at six forty-five?
At what?
Six forty-five?
So the-
Oh.
It's already six forty-six.
I'm looking at the clock in the back, it's five minutes behind. Come back in five minutes, how's that? Whatever clock you're using.
Andrew is facilitating the Organizational Support Work Session.
Okay, so we have, under Organizational Support, the first item we have is the, um, Actuarial Review. I'll just say something first before turning over to Jean, cause it was my initial request for the independent actuarial review. Um, as Jean also mentioned in the memo, I had, um, requested an independent actuarial review because our consultant, uh, didn't have an actuary on staff, and they now do. Uh, given that actuaries must report to, um, industry standards, I, I don't believe the, I mean, it would be highly unconventional for a different, for an actuarial second opinion to come up with anything much different as far as a overall planned design, so it would be, it would be my intent to, um, make a, a motion in the next cycle, um, authorizing a, a delay in the request for the independent actuarial review, and I think when I come back with one, I, I think what I would like an independent actuary to look at will be probably much, much less than I thought was originally necessary. It's just, it's new information. I do, I do expect to have a few questions that I like to see an, an independent actuary look at. Uh, there's, for example, I know that there is a, there is a wellness program, and I'm not saying it's the right wellness program to do, but there are, there are employee wellness models where you are doing things to make your employees healthy, and that's good, and it probably reduces costs, but there's also programs that actually have done the actual, actuarial research and validated that, uh, the buck twenty-five on our program returns you three dollars over, over five years, and maybe some of, if some of that isn't, isn't, and I'm not saying we don't necessarily do a, we don't necessarily throw things out because of the, there is, um, there are benefits to doing things besides just the cost, but I think there's, I really wanna look for ways where we can add, offer something extra that actually saves more money in the long run, whether that is wellness plans, whether that's a test that isn't normally covered by insurance, but could be, we could be innovative and, and offer. Um, I'm not gonna pull an example out of the air, because the last time I did that, I pulled a really bad example out of the air, but there are, I know there are tests, I, I suspect that there are tests that traditional insurance doesn't fund because their payback horizon is so many years out that perhaps we would look at differently, and an actuary might look at that. So, that would be my, my thought would be to, um, and the reason it's, the reason it's here is because the deadline was August and was extended to, to October. So as the, um, as the requester, I am okay with delaying it through the, um, you know, certainly making a motion authorizing it be delayed till the November nineteenth meeting, since we'll have additional information and presentation sitting in between that. Do you have any to add?
Um, I would just add that, uh, on the second page of the memo, we are looking at the impact to our health plan and to the services, and one of those things is to just work really, uh, in a, in a purposeful way to, uh, have places where our employees can go for healthcare that are low-cost but still meet the needs of their, themselves and their families, and so we're looking at, uh, adding balance near-site clinics to the health plan and actually, uh, removing a barrier, which is the, the payment that they, that the employee and their families have to pay when they go to our clinic and the, uh, and the near-site clinics. And that might, uh, encourage people even to a greater extent to, uh, go to the clinics when they don't need to go to an ER or, uh, make an appointment with their doctor. And the positive thing about our, um, our clinics is that they all have, um, Epic as a, um, as a system that the physicians and the nurse practitioners and nurses use, so they can share the information with their primary care provider. Um, I'd also like to just share with you in, in November, a couple of highlights from our, uh, Wellness Report that we did, from the Health Risk Assessments that we, we've been doing, our personal health assessments. We now have four years, a four-year cohort of employees and their, uh, who have taken this, taken this over four years to show how they, they've managed their care in the metrics that are measured on that assessment, which I think is, is interesting. And, um, uh, we, we've scored very well as a district, and, um, I think you'll find that interesting. So next week, or next month, rather, we'll present some of the findings and some of the recommendations for adding some things to our plan that are wellness-focused.
Okay, anything else?
So, um, uh, I'm not a hundred percent clear on what you were, what you were saying. So you're delaying-
So I would intend to make a, a motion delaying, um, postponing the request for an independent actuarial review until the November, until the November board meeting, at which point, I mean, I don't wanna postpone it out farther and then maybe have to make a, a motion again, but if I would've, I would suppose probably, if, based on what I'm hearing here, I think I would have a proposal for a much smaller scope actuarial review in November.
Oh, okay, so your, your pro- your, your motion will be to delay the deadline to request the actuary-
Correct.
And then you'll decide, you'll have another motion potentially of what you're-
Right.
-gonna ask for. Okay, got it, thanks.
Okay, uh, anything else? All right, then, um, moving along, we have the One Hundred Series School Board Operations and Four Forty-one point one, um, Student Government Policy. I have that, uh, committee report, and, um, who would like to go first? Melissa?
So if you recall, Dr. Warren had requested that the One Hundred Series policies be reviewed. Um, a number of them are, are pretty dated and updated to reflect the current work of the board and the, um, current, um, collaboration between administration and the school board. So you have in front of you all of the One Hundred Series, as well as, uh, what Andrew said, Policy, um, for, I'm sorry. Is it Four Forty?
Four Forty-one.
Four Forty-one, okay. Four Forty-one with respect to the student representative on the school board. Um, Dr. Warren, Ed, and Laura and I met, um, for a, a good day. Um, Andrew, uh, unfortunately, wasn't able to join us on that committee, and so Laura stepped in in, in his place. And we went through all of the policies. We looked at model policies, we looked at other school district policies in comparison to, um, our, our policies, and we drafted, as a starting point for the board's discussion tonight, um, language. Unlike other policies that we bring to your attention, like the ones that we brought earlier in the Four Hundred Series, these are truly your policies. These govern your work, these govern your interactions with staff and the administration. So, um, it, this is for you to decide, and for you to decide what the language would look like. So I put together a chart for you to hopefully summarize what the changes are, uh, very high level. We did not do comparison documents because some of these are brand-new policies. Some of them were, um, complete redos, and it just became too confusing. Some of them are combining policies to hopefully consolidate, so it's, uh, more transparent and easier for you and the public to understand. Um, but you certainly are free to pull up the existing policy, uh, on the website so that you can compare the documents together. So we can start and just go one by one? Is that how you prefer to do this? Okay. All right, so the first is Policy One Ten, which is the, um, currently, it's entitled District Mission and Beliefs. We changed it to District Mission and, um, scaled back the belief statements, because those are really fluid statements that the board, um, changes from time to time. So we included what the district mission is, and then as an exhibit, we have adopted, or we're proposing to adopt, the district's strategic direction, which includes, includes those vision and belief statements in that strategic direction as an exhibit. And that's what currently exists on the website.
Any, uh, questions on that? All right, so we'll move, uh, One, One Ten forward, including the exhibit.
Thank you.
Um, then One Thirty, uh, Board Legal Status?
The only revisions to, uh, Policy One Thirty is just to place it into our standard format with the purpose and then the implementation. There were no definitions in this policy.
Okay, questions? All right, um, One Thirty-three, School Board Vacancies.
Okay. Uh, we updated the policy to provide further clarity on board, the board vacancy process. We did not make any changes to the rule, as that was last revised in June of, uh, twenty-sixteen.
Comments or questions? Brenda?
Are we all satisfied with the process of that, of how that works?
Are you not?
Well, I, I, I don't know. I felt like kind of a... I mean, I'm, I'm obviously very satisfied with Christina being here. That's not what I mean. Uh, how long has it been that way? How long has that process been, been in place?
Well, the last, the last time we did it before you was Katie, so- Well, the last, the last time we did it before you was Katie's, so it's not a-
Okay. So it's not like it happens too often?
No.
Yeah, I, I, I think Rhonda, you and I had talked about, is there maybe just, just so there's no question about everyone getting a fair shake? Do we have a, do we just suck it up and have a round one where everyone gets to, everyone gets to show up and have ten minutes before the board, if they're a legal candidate in a, in a round one? And before you go selecting more, I mean, yes, that could be several hours, but then everyone, everyone got a chance to be heard, right? The, the professional, the recently graduated student, everyone would get their chance. I thought that might be worth consideration.
Well, nothing in this policy prohibits this, prohibits that. This is, I, I would caution you against putting such specific information in a policy because it's really, as the vacancies become, become open, it's for you to decide what that process looks like. So when, Rhonda, when your vacancy became open, we, Sandy and I looked back in the materials to try and find the process that they used when Katie's position was filled. There was not much information. So the board put together that process for your interview and for your, fulfilling that seat. And then because it was so soon thereafter, that was the same process that was used when Christina was selected. So it's really open to the board at that time as to what you want that process to look at, look like. And the language of the policy and rule would allow for that flexibility.
So if we ever come back to it again, we can take a look or we can talk about it if we have to?
Because this just gives us the, how many days, you know, the timeline has to be filled and all of those kinds of things.
Right.
So is it in rules that we have the other stuff?
Nope. It was, what, remember if you recall when Julie was leaving, we brought to the board a proposed process. We had used guidance from WASB as to how to fill a vacancy. And we brought proposed questions and a proposed timeline and a notice and the advertisement that you all decided when we filled-
I guess I just thought by now it would have been at least in a rule, if not in a, so there is no rule?
We do have a rule, but it's not that specific because it allows for the board to design the process when the vacancy occurs.
Each, each time.
Correct. You know, some things might not have met your needs when you filled these last two positions and you may want to go back and adjust the process, but we did that at a board meeting consistent with the policy and the rule.
Does the rule have the emergency, whatever we decided was the emergency procedure to avoid, to preclude the possibility of going sixty days and having the state pick for us? Did we do something with that?
That's not allowed. We have to fill the position.
Oh, no, I know that.
Yep.
But there's, haven't boards adopted alternative plan if you get to day fifty-nine and you're deadlocked or something?
The rule says if the vacancy is not filled, then it does provide for how, how the vacancy is filled within that sixty days.
So is there, I guess, is there a plan? I mean, is there, do we define some kind of a plan B if the board is deadlocked?
The language of rule 133E says, on the second page, "The board will implement the board adopted written procedures accompanying this policy that expressly address how vacancies are filled after the sixty day period." So it's within the, the rule for 133. I would have filled that after the sixty days.
But after, after the sixty days, doesn't that happen for you from the outside?
That, that law was changed.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Other, anything else on 133, board vacancies?
Okay.
Okay. Then move to 141, board officers.
Okay. So we are suggesting that we adopt board policy 141. We currently have policies 141.1, 141.2, and we are asking to consolidate those policies into 141. 141.1 is school board officer elections and 141.2 is school board officer duties. We're just consolidating that into one policy regarding school board officers.
But there's no language change. It's just leaving that.
There may be some lang, I mean, there's no substantive language change.
Okay. Anything? Okay, move that forward. 142, district legal counsel.
142 is a new policy regarding district legal counsel. There currently is not a policy that exists. This policy sets forth the roles and responsibilities of in-house counsel as well as the board's right to obtain representation from outside counsel.
So I, just to make it clear, I can't, I can't, I can't imagine any circumstances under which we wouldn't desire or want an in-house counsel in the district. And my only regret regarding in-house counsel is that we didn't move, that I didn't push for that idea much, much sooner than we did, given how much money was going out the door in expensive hourly fees to firms that were good but had, didn't have dream as their sole focus. So that being said, I was just wondering if it, if we're saying the district shall employ in-house legal counsel, are we, is that, are we doing that like with, with everything? Again, I, I cannot imagine ever not having a full-time in-house legal counsel, for sure. But I don't know. I, I don't know if we have any other things that say we shall hire other than superintendents and principals? Ken?
Well, I'm sensitive to the word shall. I mean, we, we had talked about that in relationship to hiring where, where the word shall was, was put in erroneously, suggesting that the board was going to delegate something that we have no authority to delegate. I would, I'd recommend we change the shall to a may. If it's in policy, then you are saying that future boards have no choice in that or either, without changing the policy?
Okay. We'll make that change.
Yeah, and again, I have no, I have no intent to, to change that we have legal counsel or who our legal counsel is. It's just the shall, may thing.
Agreed.
Anything else? Okay. Move that forward. Appointment of school board member representatives, 144.
The existing policy 144 addressed the appointment of a legislative liaison, but it did not address the appointment of other representatives of the Board of Education. So the policy was revised to include appointment of other board representatives, the general roles and duties, and it also includes the role of the legislative liaison.
Questions here? These are all things that we've been, been doing and just writing it down?
Yep.
Okay. Now move forward to 150, school board policy, school board powers and duties.
Okay. So this, the language of this policy was revised to recognize the distinct roles of the Board of Education, which is governance, and that of the administrative team, which is management. Policy 150 was updated to reflect the collaborative nature of the relationship while maintaining the separation of those roles.
Questions about this one? And I may have a, a couple. I'm just looking at the old 161 here.
I think one of the, maybe in some folks, myself, would find more notable things is we, we took out the, the team, the word team from, from that policy, if I remember right. I did talk about working in collaboration with, but not as a team.
Was that the only change?
I'm sorry?
What were the other changes?
Well, the old, if we're looking at just board powers, the old, the old 161 had-
It's 150, Andrew.
150?
150.
Oh, yeah, but 150 is referencing, if we're looking at school board powers, the old policy-
No, it's 150 to 150.
So, well, I guess I'm thinking more board, is, is 161 mapped to 161? It's cross-referenced though, right?
It's cross-referenced and there's a, there is a 161.
Okay. So they're all side by side, but also cross-referenced to each other? Or most of them?
Yes. It would be, it is cross-referenced, correct.
Okay. Well, I will-
160 is school board member authority.
Okay. I just saw the, I saw the cross-reference and I thought some of that was coming into, so, never mind. Oh, well, so, anyway, questions on 150? Now there's, I guess, there's, there isn't, like, these are all good practices that I think we mostly do, but there's not really, there's no enforcement mechanism here, right? I mean-
Who would, what do you mean?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I mean, there's, you know, there's, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, yes, you should work collaboratively and, you know, effective decision-making, but some people can run for the, run for the board for a variety of reasons. It would be within someone's, you know, right to, you know, to not, not be here to be a team, but be here to replace a, a team or something, right? Is there, that's, you know, that's not me. I had a little kick for a while where I was watching some really dysfunctional board meetings on YouTube and this is not, this is not it. Yep, it's never even been close. But, and I mean, someone could be, someone could be running on a platform of something other than teamwork and problem solving. Does anything, I mean, you can't legislate being nice, I guess, is what I'm saying, even though we're really pretty nice. So, I guess, I don't know. Maybe I answered my own question. Does it use, there's a, well, it says in the board shall, that's what no one else is worried about, I guess.
Well, I think, and I don't think we have anything on there, although the question has been raised. I don't think we have in here, correct me if I'm wrong, a, a vehicle should I decide to really, you know, go off on a tangent and, and become, you know, just bizarre. Is there a vehicle for the board to remove me?
The board cannot remove another board member. The, you can censure, but that you cannot, you do not have the authority to remove another board member.
And that's statutory, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's more of a, setting an expectation or a standard, right, rather than a-
Well, I think we're the ones that, that's, you know, are responsible for how our board functions. So in terms of, what was the word you used, Andrew?
Enforce.
Enforcement, yeah. I mean, I think that then the burden falls to us to enforce ourselves, either as a group or individual.
I think the only recourse really would be, you know, that would be a public determination to attempt a recall, if there's no vehicle within the board itself.
Or something, or something like a censure, although my, my bar, for me, is the individually, my, my bar to make or vote for a censure motion would be extraordinarily egregious conduct, so. Okay. So anything else on the 150? I'll jump ahead to 151, adoption, revision, maintenance and dissemination of board policies and rules.
We are proposing to consolidate the existing policy 151.2 into policy 151. The language deals with adoption and revision and maintenance, and then we're just adding also the dissemination of policy into the existing policy 151 for further clarity and to complete really the process of the adoption of the policy and then the dissemination of the policy. The language is the same. It's just all folded into one policy.
Questions on that? I have one under, supposed to be 151, implementations that would be 2C, adoption of new policies or revisions to existing policies. So, and it says in there, "Only those written statements so adopted and recorded shall be regarded as official board policy." So I've, there have been a lot of times where I've said something effective, yep, that's, that's a good idea. Nope, I'm not worried at all that anyone in this room won't implement it faithfully, but if, if we didn't write it down, we didn't do anything. So I thought there had been some mention before that if things are, things are in the, the minutes, that that carries some weight, but really should, if we're directing something, should it be policy changes?
Not everything you're going to do is going to be policy. Policy is designed to be the general guidance and the workings of the school district and the school board. And then the implementation of that would be, as you pass motions, tonight we talked about revisions to various different curriculum. We have a policy that provides the process for curriculum revisions. And then that would be the implementation as you make a motion to revise that curriculum.
Are you thinking of, of the board giving instructions to administration that we want to see something happen?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's in the, in the board minutes and that-
But does, does that-
That doesn't have to be written in policy.
But is that-
For it to happen, right?
Does it require a motion though? I mean, I would think it, that's, maybe that's a little bit beyond the scope of this, though, I can-
So, right, I think it depends on exactly what we're talking about. We are bringing a policy forward, administrative action in the absence of the policy. That's in this packet. So that may get to your concern, Andrew.
All right. Anything else? Okay, 151.2, administration in the absence of-
Here it is.
Here it is.
Policy, okay.
So this, this policy is designed to provide that guidance when there is not a policy in place and to guide administration when they are conducting business, when, to fill in the gaps.
So this is writing down what's probably happened many times?
We have to conduct the day-to-day business of the district.
Questions on this? Okay. Move that forward. 151.5, suspension of policies.
The language was updated to indicate that policies can be suspended provided the decision is consistent with law, so that we couldn't, for example, suspend our policy on anti-discrimination or on bullying and harassment because we're required to have a policy with respect to anti-discrimination and bullying and harassment.
Is that common, that it's a simple majority vote to suspend policies? I suppose because you could, someone could just make a motion and I mean to change a policy and that would be a simple majority vote, so.
Correct. And that's what's in the, the existing policy is the majority vote.
I see where, you know, repealing policies because they're no longer appropriate or we've rolled them into something. When might a policy be suspended? That, that's just a kind of a curious-
The Wednesday night, we have a policy that says we can't have school functions on Wednesday night. And then we've had times when we've had so many canceled games because of weather that they can't fit them in and we can suspend that policy to allow, that's the only one I could think of with that.
I thought there was another one that had come forward and I, I can't remember what it was either.
But yeah, it's, it would be a- But yeah, it's, it would be a temporary, you know, like something out of the ordinary has happened. We want the policy to continue, but this particular year or month, something funny happened and we have to suspend it.
It might have been a probable fire.
What?
It might, it's-
Oh, the probable fire?
I only see that where the-
Oh, sure.
I can't remember exactly.
Well, this is a little, little weird for me probably, but it, the Wednesday, isn't that awfully, isn't that awfully specific for a board policy level thing, the Wednesday night activities? Is that still a policy?
It is a policy, yeah.
Even after we've done all these things?
And I've seen it in other school districts, too.
So, did we keep it? I mean, we, did we keep it when we revised that particular section?
You wanna explain what the policy is for Christina?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a policy, um, that I, I can't, don't wanna quote off the top of my head, but it, respecting a certain time on Wednesday nights to allow, that's the night when usually if kids are in, um, formal religious programs, that's the night that, um, for, those formal-
Just like their own churches on Wednesdays.
Are, are Wednesday nights.
After six o'clock.
After six o'clock, so it's-
So, it still stands after six o'clock on Wednesday?
After six o'clock. Yep. And it's, that's very common across school districts. Five forty-five, practice ends. On Wednesday nights.
And it's been like that.
I'm not saying I'm opposed to the practice, but it's just-
It's very specific.
Regardless of what you're doing at, at six o'clock, it's good to know that there's always gonna be a short night of, of some, something, but that just seems really, as I said, for someone who doesn't get too concerned about being specific in policy, that seems really specific in policy. All right, so-
I think we looked at it, um, within the last, I don't know, five years, maybe? With the question of, you know, are, are these classes that we're having this policy for still occurring on Wednesdays?
I know, I haven't done it since I've been here.
Oh, so maybe it's been moved in that then.
So, it was before me, yeah.
But, and at the time, they were, there was still a, it was-
Well, I'm just strictly thinking from a-
Not universally.
No, it's not universal.
And it's-
Technical perspective, and I'm, certainly I'm not, I'm not saying that I, I'm, I'm not saying anything about having a policy to, um, advance specific religious, or advance or inhibit or anything like that, of course, but it just, it seems like, you know, maybe a board directive as opposed to policy, but-
When we, we can bring that forward and when we do that section, to look at that.
All right, anything else? Okay, one sixty-one, school board member authority.
Okay. This policy was revised consistent with WSB model policy one sixty-one and was updated to address various situations where a board member's authority may extend, including authority to make statements on behalf of the board in the district, receiving, investigating, and resolving complaints, disclosure of legally protected or otherwise confidential or sensitive information, and interactions with district staff and district operations. To a large extent, the revised language already, um, just puts into place what the board's practices are in these areas, as well as incorporates various provisions of other policies in the law that address these topics.
Okay. Questions here? I guess I have, I have a few. See, that my, um, line that I use quite a bit made us, made its way in here. Individual views, opinions, or positions by individual board members. I mean, I, I was saying that before, it was policy and others, others said it too in their own way, so that's good to see that in writing here. And I think in, uh, the, being kind of funny there, but in seriousness to it, does, it does clarify. We can, you know, if someone, oh wait, I wouldn't, hey, it's, it's right here. We speak as individuals. It also, it also puts in writing very clearly that we do have the, um, there's no question about the fact that we have our right to our, to express our individual opinions as independent elected officials choose. So, that's in, that's good. Wondering about the, the shell thing in the receiving, investigating, and resolving complaints. If an individual board member receives a complaint or other communication from a student, parent, you know, um, that appears to call for response, the board member shall contact and refer the matter to superintendent of schools and learning or, or designees, except for this highly unusual, which is a pretty, uh, a pretty high bar there. And then, I guess, unless authorized by the board or performing his or her legally, legal or board authorized duties as a board member, individual, individual board members shall not unilaterally conduct an investigation into complaints, um, or attempt three, I'm okay with three B because it says outside of established procedures. So, I, I guess the way I, I look at it, one, you know, one, one situation comes to mind where, if I, if I get a call about something that's likely to be touchy or sensitive, it's much more boring than some people might think. I usually have a talk about going to the proper channels, as I think, um, or have you tried the proper channels? Or are you aware of the proper channels? Normal channels. There was a time that, there was a time that someone felt that they wanted to speak to me in private first, before moving that step forward, and I did. And in the off, in the off chance that that causes me to have foreknowledge of something ever goes to a hearing that I have to recuse myself from, which has happened never, I, I'm gonna take that chance if someone says I'd like to, I'd like to speak to you. I've, I've told people, um, I really like to refer this to the, the superintendent. I'll go with you if, if you'd like. But I could, I could see where there's, if this is viewed very narrowly, that any, almost anything could be, uh, uh, investigation. Someone could call it an investigation that's improper and what, if it says shall not, what does that mean? Or is the underlying theme here that these are all guidelines? Because really, all the board could do is censure someone and only the electorate could remove someone, so they're, they're guidelines?
So, the purpose of, of the language in B one and in the language of three A is you are the ultimate decision-making authority and should you conduct an investigation, it compromises your impartiality. Should the matter come to you through the formal grievance process or through the formal complaint process? WSB is very clear, um, as it is our liability carrier, that we have to follow that complaint process and those grievance processes. So, not as to expose the district to liability and to ensure that, for example, um, let, let's say it's a sexual harassment complaint. And the law is very clear of the steps that you need to follow when investigating a sexual harassment complaint to protect the complaine and tho, the individual that he or she is making the complaint about. And if you don't follow that steps, then, um, there could be additional liability as well as additional concerns for the person who has brought forward the complaint. So, this-
And when the case that you're saying here, that person would be breaking the law. They, they'd be illegally, you're talking about someone, right?
Not necessarily. It could be, um, it, it could be not enough that rises to sexual harassment or, um, sexual discrimination, but it could be under our policies, prohibited conduct under, uh, bullying, for example. And that's not necessarily a violation of the law, because it might not be based on sex. But our policies are very clear, the process you need to follow. So, this language, i- it doesn't prohibit you from receiving a complaint. It prohibits the board from conducting the investigation about that complaint, because again, you are the ultimate decision-maker and you would then be compromising your impartiality should that complaint come to your attention. Now, that doesn't stop you from probing a little bit and ma, and making sure that you are bringing forward a valid concern so that when you do come forward to the superintendent, you have enough information to share with him or her regarding the issue. But you should not be the investigator. That's what we have our Title IX staff, that's what we have our human resources staff, people who are professionally trained in conducting an investigation.
See, see, that's where it gets muddy for me. And how do we, where, where is it determined? Where's that line between getting clarification, listening to people, and then calling that an investigation? I mean, I, I'm not gonna bring up specifics here, but, uh, you know, I, I've been there. Having been contacted and invited in and following up and then being told, well, Ed, you know, you're, you're not supposed to be investigating. Well, wasn't considering what I was doing investigating, so, you know, just where is that line? I'm, I'm just not real comfortable with that.
We could definitely, um, explore that more and bring in, and do some professional development for the board as to where that line is. I, I think that's a great topic to explore. This is really meant, this language is meant to protect you as the board, it's meant to protect the individuals who are bringing forward the concern, and it's meant to protect the process. So, you know, digging in a little bit to, to see what's going on, that's not investigating. But when you're contacting witnesses and asking for various document, documentation, that starts to creep into conducting an investigation. And what we would do on our end when we would conduct an investigation to ferret out whether the allegations that are being brought forward to your attention are, are accurate.
Okay, and maybe it's a gray area that, that there is no, no clear resolution for, but, uh-
I would imagine this, depending who you're getting your professional development from, you might get different opinions about investigation. There, I'm, there's probably no clear, are there any clear, like, legal, is there, is it like a legal term investigation versus?
I don't think it's a legal term, but I would say when you're start, we have very specific procedures in place for conducting investigations and reviewing complaints. I'd say when you're starting to get into exactly what those procedures are, that's when, in a, an investigation, and Jean could add.
I think, um, one of the things that I, I feel can happen, and it varies with the individual, is that as you ask questions of an individual or they share information, you start to form opinions and, uh, sometimes you can be swayed by something somebody says. And so, when you, and, you know, those of you who've done this work, and I know, Ed, you certainly have, you start to, you try to be unbiased and you try to get facts. And when you're talking to one person, but perhaps not another person that may be associated with the investigation, but you may not even know it, you're starting to, um, your mind starts to go in one direction and your impartiality might be compromised. You may not even recognize that and that's what the danger is. Because when you, uh, function as a, as a board member, you're supposed to be impartial when, if any of these matters would come before you. And so, you should not have preconceived ideas and notions about what you heard or what you may not have heard. So, it's not always what you heard, it's what parts you didn't notice here. And that's when, so when we do the investigation, as Melissa said, we have procedures to make sure we've talked with everybody who may be involved.
And Christina was next.
I, I, yeah, I just wanna go on record and say I would like to explore that more. It, I think the vagueness concerns me for the potential power to shut people down who are, could potentially be trying to do good work, to listen and understand something and where somebody else may be trying to shut it down and it could, you could use this, um, in that way. So, I would like to learn more about it, I agree with you.
Um, anything else?
That's what I was gonna say.
Um, yes, well, it's-
I think we're on number one sixty-two is next.
He's still looking.
Oh, you're still looking, I'm sorry.
I'm just checking off a little bit of stuff here and-
Hey, I actually have a question, Andrew, while you're looking.
Yes.
Brendan, maybe this is more for you, but, um, going up to making statements, um, as president on behalf of the board, it's like at the very top of-
Of one sixty-one?
Yeah.
Two A.
Yeah, two A. I'm just curious, when you are speaking on behalf of the board or speaking independently as a board member, do you note that when you're talking to your, okay?
I mean, I might not be perfect, but when I'm talking, I mean, when I'm talking in, in, uh, public, I'm speaking for the board. When I'm talking individually, um, and we're talking about something that, you know, maybe the board has decided or maybe, you know, then I'm speaking for the board, because I can say what the board said. Other times, I don't know what the board's gonna say, and so they'll ask me, what do you think? And I'll say, I can't speak for the board, because we haven't had that conversation yet. But my own personal opinion is this, and I'll, I'll frame it like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, right, um, so, board, board member authority and interactions with district staff and district operations. Are we, does it become, does it become too easy for the, does it become too easy for the majority to shut down an individual's request? And I, I get that there's probably some point at which I could picture someone making, you know, unreasonable requests versus requests that are not liked, I guess, and I, I don't know.
Are you looking at one C there?
Yeah. Yeah, one, one C, yeah, one, one C.
D one C?
D one C, yeah.
D one C. And I don't, yeah, the, what's to stops, and, and again, I, we're writing policy here. So, I'm not, I'm not thinking too much about, you know, John trying to shut down my request. I'm speaking of a future in which different people might be around the, the table on both sides. People asking ridiculous, people asking ridiculous requests of, you know, some other board member in the future and also, or some, some administrator in the future who maybe didn't do something right and doesn't want it to be talked about very much, right? But both those things could happen someday and are we, is this just, uh, so, someone requests something, the administrator says that would create, um, that would be a, um, this, hey, you know what? You know what, Mr. X, this would be substantial staff time. Um, and then it goes to the board and the board can vote down the, the request to do it. It, it seems a little, I don't know the answer to it, but it seems a little easy. Throwing that out there?
Could you clarify, what you mean, what seems?
Well, so, okay, so, I'd like, uh, I'd like a, I'd like a report on the types of, types of structures built in woodworking classes district-wide for the last two years, which actually probably isn't that big of a deal, but we'll just pick on something nice and innocent sounding. So, then I bring it to the administration and this, um, future administrator who might not be, um, as on the ball as our administrators today, doesn't really wanna talk about the fact that they're not really building a lot of wood stuff there anymore. So, I, you know, Andrew, I'm just so sorry, that is, uh, that is, uh, that requires, that is a record that does not presently exist and I would like this to be referred to the board as a whole. The board as a whole is not as nice of folks as we are right now and four to three votes me down and then the report just doesn't happen and the world never finds out that we aren't really making wood stuff anymore. Obviously, this is not about wood stuff, it's an example.
We get that.
I think, I think one of the important things always is to, to recognize that the through line of accountability starts with the board. So, the questions that we would expect from the board would have to do with, with the expectations around the priorities of the board work. And, and if they are not- And, and if they are not, then the question becomes, and I think that that sometimes is the concern, or questions that I get asked is, is this aligned to the work that we're expected to do from the charge of the board through accountability and those kinds of pieces? So I think that, that what is always helpful is if the question comes collectively so that the whole board can see what the question is, and if, if possible. I mean, sometimes there are quick questions you call and ask an administrator, but for a work kind of opportunity, that's always helpful because then, then it's a recognition that, yes, this is the direction of the board. I mean, I think that what I hear and what I know is that we want to be responsive to the board. Our responsibility is to provide you what you need so that you can successfully govern in your roles and lead, you know, in a governance role. So, you know, that's, that's the balance that we try to address, is making sure that the needs are met. And I'm thinking of potentially someone taking us way off into a project, and that's why we'd want to bring it back for the whole board and say, is this the desire of the board to do the woodworking?
But I'm not worried, again, this is about policy, I'm not worried about you. I'm not worried about anyone in this room. It's about, I guess it's, I guess, maybe ultimately there is nothing except the, ultimately, I suppose, a board member could go to court if they felt they were being denied something improperly.
Well, you always have the right to do a public records request. The public records law does not require a records custodian to create a record. And I think this particular provision gets into where it's a substantial amount of work, and I think this is what Dr. Lingan felt was trying to get to. If it's a substantial amount of work that redirects the work of staff in order to compile a request from a single board member, is that the will of the board to redirect staff work to compile information for one specific board member.
Pardon?
I mean, I would, I get what you're, what you're saying, but at the end of the day, I don't think we can control behavior of future boards through what we do. I mean, this is leaving it up to the, whatever the current board's preferences to, you know, decide whether they want the report to be made. And in the future, we might disagree with what the board, the future boards do, but at the end of the day, they're, they're the current board.
Right, but it presents, you're still, you're still creating a, you're still creating a certain bar. You're still telling the, you know, we're telling the future board who says you don't get to have any reports at all, you would at least, they would at least have to take the step, the public step of changing a policy.
Well, I think it's, it's not that you don't get to have any information at all. It's where it would create, it demands significant staff time to create, compile, or locate. That's what would be referred to the board. Because if you look at number 1A, it allows for individual board members to make requests. It's only when it would demand significant staff time to create, compile, or locate.
Yeah, the first sentence, I think, I think, I think I found, I'm concerned about, and I'll submit an amendment next, next week. I think that it says, you know, the significant, it says if you're requesting a report that doesn't presently exist or that would require significant staff time. There's plenty of reports that don't exist that could, that I've asked for and I've gotten that have, should take, it's flipping something in a pivot table. But again, could an administrator, oh, hey, that, nope, that, that doesn't exist because I didn't, I only had appeals to the pivot table, so it doesn't, doesn't exist yet. Not you, future, others, maybe, okay. So I'll probably propose amendment, but I don't want to work, work smooth down here. Anything else on that? Okay, so we're on to 162.
There was just a slight change in 162 with the second sentence that says an initial orientation will be provided to new board members, and then however board member orientation and development shall be considered an ongoing process for all board members.
Okay, anything on that? Okay, School Board Memberships, 163.1.
163.1 was revised to encourage membership and participation in activities in other organizations versus... The language was a little ambiguous in the existing policy, which said that shall maintain membership and that they deem to be in the best interest of the board, and the board shall participate in their activities. So it's got to the word "shall" rather than encourage.
Any questions on there? Yeah, move that forward, Board Member Compensation and Expenses.
The language was updated to include information regarding tax implications for board compensation.
Okay, Brenda?
D, it says board compensation shall be reviewed annually in April. Is that something the board reviews, or is it staff reviews it?
No, Sandy puts it on the board agenda in April, and the board reviews that.
Did I miss that? We didn't do it, right?
We did it last year, but we do do it.
Okay, I just want to...
We often do it around the time of the budget, well, which is May when you're submitting budgets. So we have done it multiple times. We've never been able to bring ourselves to raising our salary. That's essentially what ends up happening. I've probably, we've had this discussion at least three or four times over the last, since I've been on the board.
And that's not even why I'm asking. I think it's, there are people that don't know what we get paid, they don't know that we get paid, they don't know how that's figured, or how people, how they've arrived at that number. The discussion in general.
So you're saying it should be more intentional when we do that?
Yeah, and I guess...
To educate the public on our compensation.
Yeah, I guess, because they really don't, a lot of people think we actually make salary salaries.
So I'll kind of, can I piggyback off that? So what I was actually thinking was, April seems like a weird month to me because of the elections. So if you have...
It would be right after.
Yeah, but I know, but if you have people moving in or moving out, it may not, I don't know, it just seems like an odd month to choose to review something like that.
Well, it's because, because the budget is due to the CFO in May, correct, or June?
I wouldn't go the side with budgets.
That's why, that's why, I get what you're saying. But if we're going to make a change, then it...
Could you move it up to March?
Well, then it's the old board making the decision.
Yeah, it's true, yeah.
Okay, I get it, yeah, just curious.
It's never been in, I mean, the timing of it is always probably...
It used to be January.
Oh, did it?
Do, do you feel like in this policy, maybe I'm missing it, that are you looking for language here that would show a commitment to transparency with, like, compensation will be reviewed and shared with public, or what? How can I, how can you connect your concern to the policy, I guess?
I don't like the concern, I just read that, and I thought, did I miss a conversation that we didn't have? Or else, because we didn't, obviously. But I think there is, there are people that don't understand or don't realize that it's, we're not walking out with 40 grand as a salary for this position. There are people out there that don't understand that. And I don't know how you would convey that, or...
Well, you might, we could just add a little bit of language there. Board compensation shall be reviewed, and something about as an agenda item.
Yeah, in our meeting, yeah, I was thinking that too.
I think every other, I think every other type we reviewed, but the review was simply designed in wish to make changes. No, okay. But yeah, I think having more to have it be an agenda item.
And for the record, I'm not asking for more money, that's not why I'm asking about this.
So if we change the language of D to say board compensation shall be reviewed annually in April at a properly noticed meeting of the board? Okay.
Andrew, John, have something?
Sorry, John?
I can place it in the budget book every October if you want it as part of those documents.
That would be great.
That's probably, that would take care of everything, probably. Because then we could refer to someone to look at it.
Is that listed as a line item in the budget book? I thought it was already listed. But you're saying put it as a...
Specific.
Specific, yeah.
So people can identify it.
A pie chart, something?
Well, typically, annual meetings are the location and time that board salaries are addressed. And ours is a little different format, so we could publicize it in the fall in the budget book, which is on our website. And then in April, according to this policy, review those numbers if you want.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Anything else there? All right, School Board Member Behavior and Ethical Standards.
This policy was just updated to put it in standard format.
These are, these are our guidelines, there's no... We all, we all do all of these things, but there's no, if someone didn't choose to review materials, there's no, you don't have to go sit in the corner or anything.
Well, we could make that a rule.
Yeah, I don't know that you, I don't know that you could, probably. According to this, you could not, but it's not in there.
Well, but I think, I think again, that board members, if there's, you know, we're not going to do whatever the word is for punishment kind of things, but I do think that it's, that it's our job as board members to address things that we think don't follow the ethical behaviors, in whatever way the board decides to do that.
Okay, 165.1, Board Member Conflict of Interest.
This is a newly proposed rule to provide transparency and clarity for the Board of Education and the public regarding what constitutes a conflict of interest for a member of the board and subsequent action a board member may take when a conflict exists. The policy also sets forth rights of individual board members of the Board of Education to seek an opinion regarding a potential conflict of interest.
You said it's a rule, but it doesn't say rule on our...
Did I say rule? Policy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure, because it's long.
We're on number 19.
It's longer than most policies, so I thought maybe it was a rule.
Yes.
Questions here? School Board Member, School Board Member Electronic Communications, 166.
This is another new policy requesting adoption. The 100 series was last reviewed in 2005, so that probably predated the prevalence of electronic communications. This policy largely reflects state law regarding electronic communications among elected officials, and the use of various methods of electronic communications imposes various issues for the board, including the areas of retention of records, open records, and open meetings. This sets forth best practices for school board members and the use of those electronic communications. So, nothing that you haven't already heard from me with respect to the use of electronic communications?
3A, Prohibited Uses of Electronic Communications by Board Members. If you go to number two, Communications for the Purpose of Campaigning for Election. This, I think you mean District Electronic Resources, because it doesn't say that.
Right, we should make that clarification.
Because otherwise, you'd be suggesting that a board member can't use electronic communication for elections, which of course you do, you just don't use your district stuff for it, so...
Yep, so we will clarify number two.
So, is there, so if there was a... Is every, is, something recent came to mind that doesn't apply anymore, but if something is merely procedural, if board members are weighing in by email on something procedural, I, in my individual opinion, I think that there should be open forum on this item, or in my opinion, as an elected official, we should do blank procedure, not substance. You still can do that?
That's conducting board business, because that is part of your function as a board, to govern the procedure of your meeting.
But doesn't that come under acceptable use, number two, possible agenda items?
Well, that's the suggestion of agenda items, but if you're talking about what Andrew had referred to, that's not simply an agenda item.
It's using email to change procedure.
All right.
Can you clarify that, Brendan? What do you mean, change it, using, how was it a change in procedure?
No, I was, I was using Andrew's words, ask him what he means.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was looking this way.
An example where, you know, out of, out of convenience to everyone involved wanting to say, hey, let's do, let's make this an open topic, or hey, let's invite this participation, hoping that just everyone would realize that, but okay, you're saying that, and so... Other than an agenda item request, that's about it?
It's really, if you are conducting the business of the board via email, you are in violation of the open meetings law.
Well, I would even say, and if, you know, suggesting an agenda item is one thing, having five board members weigh in as to whether it should or should not be on the agenda then crosses the line.
I think it's, that's a concern, because you have a policy as to how agenda items are placed on your board agenda, and when you start all weighing in, then that gets into the substance of how an agenda item is placed on, placed on that agenda versus simply suggesting a topic and then taking that up at your board meeting as to whether that should be an agenda item.
And just, just, just in the interest of balance, I think I'm pretty, I think you have a pretty good idea on this, but you would spend more time researching this than me. All of these fine-toothed details that board members can't email, even about mundane procedural motions that don't affect any substance at all, absolutely, the legislature, the legislature has exempted itself from virtually everything that we're talking about, right? They have prescribed it for us, and they've exempted themselves. They can email, they can caucus, they can make deals. Everything that we can't do, everything that they set out here, they exempt themselves from, virtually.
I'm going to pause short of everything, but it's a pretty accurate statement.
A high percentage, okay. All right.
Do as I do, do as I say, yeah.
So we'll make that change to 3A2, the use of district-provided email.
District. Anything else? Okay, 170, Regular and Special Meetings of the Board.
We are proposing to consolidate existing policies 171, 172, 173, and 174 into Policy 170. That is a all-encompassing policy regarding the board's meetings that addresses regular board meetings, boardwork sessions, and special board meetings.
There's a type of 16 there.
Number six?
Roman six provisions.
Where is it? Oh, spell check doesn't catch all caps words, thank you.
Well, is that right?
I never realized it.
Can you turn that on?
I can turn that on.
Oh, you can turn it on, all right.
But sometime I can.
I'll research that. Okay.
All right, so 170, Policy Questions. 170 Rule.
170 Rule governs the procedures for appointing school board members then to preside over those work session meetings.
Do we have to, do we update assignments yet, or is that still in the works, because we have, Ed? I've been, I've been the facilitator for a long time.
Said you do such a good job.
I don't, I mean, I don't mind it, but I don't, like, I don't know who my, I could guess who my co-chair or my...
Well, it was Chris.
Right.
Yeah, and so when Christina came on, we slipped her into Chris's spot.
Okay, I didn't know if we ever said that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And I think...
You probably called me and asked me or something, but I just don't remember officially saying it.
I usually ask at her, at the April meeting, because we have to decide who's, I usually say, oh, maybe he wasn't here.
Invite for a meeting with John and Jean.
Okay. But as far as the board decision, okay.
Yeah, that usually happens in April, and I always ask if there's board members that would like to shift committee terms.
Oh, I know that, but when someone came in, so, okay, I didn't know if, just automatically Christina, because she said, it makes sense, I just didn't know if we ever said it, that's all.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Okay.
And then if you want me to switch to Christina every other month, like we were doing, whenever you want.
Except to Christina.
Oh, Christina, I can talk about it, yeah.
Yeah, just let me know, so I can change it.
Thank you.
Okay, one seventy, then we're good, rule? One seventy-one point two, agenda preparation and dissemination.
This policy was updated to reflect the current format and to provide further clarity for the consideration, considerations the board president should make when determining when to place items on a board agenda. The revisions also address when a board member may disagree with the board president's decision not to place an item on the board's agenda. So, the previous policy did not provide any process should a board, the board president not place something on the agenda.
Well, didn't it, didn't it require the board member to place things on agendas?
It said a board member may place items on agenda.
Meaning?
Yep.
One board member has access to the agenda?
Yep, yes.
So, this is a, this represents a substantial change. No?
So, to this actual topic, when I rewrote the bylaws for the West Student Council, I actually eliminated a clause that basically said that, because the concern was that thi- this can al- this can allow, you know, tha- that different factions can occur with any meetings. I'm not necessarily saying that's here, but I, what, what I'm trying to say is that it, it could, it would be, it seems to me very easy to eliminate any topic that, that, it seems very easy to eliminate any topic from discussion on a board agenda with, especially under two B, seems most concerning to, to me. I was concerned about it enough at a student council level, which is not elected, which isn't an official elected position that I eliminated that clause, so I don't, I don't understand why it's necessary here.
I have the, I have the same concern if, you know, the, I remember way back when we discussed one board member, we al- we also have in the policy above, we have two board members can call a special meeting, even if the president doesn't want to, but, yeah, I, I, you know, you have here a situation where, again, not, not Brenda, not anyone here, I think we have respect here, and generally, you know, we've had things like seconding for the purpose of discussion, even if you're not going to vote for it, I, I'm not worried about it today, but setting a policy where, yeah, setting a, setting a policy where someone asks for a, someone asks for an agenda topic, and the board president doesn't like it, and then the majority can just vote it down, and it never goes on an agenda, it seems like there's a, the ability to just place something on an agenda is an important part of minority rights to go along with majority rule. I'd be interested in what the committee discussion was about it.
I don't know, Ed and Lauren, Brenda want to discuss? I, I think the dis- yeah, I think the discussion was about the, the, the work of the district and items that may take a considerable amount of time, and a board member being obstructionist and putting a number of item agen- items of, for discussion on the board agenda that would be, require staff to do a considerable amount of work and not, I think it goes back to the, the previous discussion. And then where that was within the district's priorities, because, in the board's priorities, because the board sets the priorities for the year, and then if items on, are being placed on the agenda that are not aligned to the board's priorities that it has set forth for the superintendent, and then the superintendent has set forth for the administration, where that work would come in then with respect to agenda items.
I, I think that developing that agenda and having some ultimate say over what's going to go on there for, for the next meeting is an appropriate function for the president. There is relief that's offered, though, with the, if, if I decide that, if I wanted an item on there and it's refused, I still have relief by, you know, looking at item B, two B, where being able to insist that, at that next regular meeting, an agenda-setting topic be on there, so I may not get it on the October meeting, but, you know, I, I can insist that we discuss agenda-setting in the November meeting.
But does that mean, does that mean it goes on the agenda, just not at the meeting that you want, or does it mean that you have to plead your case to the board for it to even be allowed to be on an agenda?
I think it's the latter.
Yeah, so that means a major, again, a majority of the board can shut down an unpopular, even, even if three board members wanted it, the board could vote, if the board president didn't want that to be on the agenda, the, the majority of the board could say it will not even be on an agenda.
Well, you know, if we're talking hypotheticals, and the other hypothetical was, you know, I decide that I want to clutter up the agenda just to be a, you know, a pain in the neck, so I'm going to put on, I want fifteen things on there, I mean, that, you know, that's probably not very likely either, but as long as we're talking hypotheticals, that is another hypothetical.
Better answer, no?
To address that point, I thought about that, but, I mean, a de facto filibuster with agenda item requests, I think could be handled, I think if the, if that was what was happening, and someone was just trying to, you know, be obstructionist, I think the board, just given parliamentary procedure, could very easily shut all of those down. It would take a little bit of time, but I don't think the, I don't think there's too much of a worry, I don't, I don't think a gen- I think if, I think if a board member wanted to filibuster, basically, or be obstructionist, I think even, I think that they could do it, even if agenda item requests were limited like this, I think they could still do it with, whether that's with debate or with excessive dilatory motions or something like that, I think there's a way for a board member who truly wants to be obstructionist to do that, even if they're not able to make agenda item requests, and I don't think that overrides the concern about a majority, or about minor, minority not being able to put something on the agenda. I, I think there, I think there are better ways to filibuster, if you want to.
Christina?
I, I think too, like, under four A four, agenda appropriate, I'd like to see maybe just a general statement of commitment to, on the, on behalf of the president and superintendent, just, I mean, this is a policy, we're not going to get into the weeds here, but just saying, like, we'll take into, is committed to the consideration of all voices on the board, and will to ensure that, you know, something, I think, general at least, could call, underneath four, A four.
Two A four.
Two A four, sorry.
Two A four, okay.
I think just like a general recognition of, okay, it may not necessarily fit into your agenda, I'm just using you, Brenda, as an example, because you're the president, right, but recognition that there may be other people that might have something, and you, that there's a commitment there, so I don't know, I, I think that would make me feel better here.
Except then it's, sorry.
Go ahead.
Except then it's, I mean, there is that, if the rest, if four people on the board decide that they want that agenda item on, then it gets put on. Is that not, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I'm just clarifying, and maybe it would help if you just, if, if we knew the words you were going to add.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm like spitballing here, I'd have to...
Well, you can bring them, I mean, you can bring them back to the next meeting, but, anyway.
Rhonda?
Yeah, I guess, is there a lot of problem with this, that this is being created that we're not aware of? It just seems like a lot of control.
I don't want to say there's a lot of problem, but this is a very typical policy in other school districts as to how an agenda is created.
Right, that's, but that, but that's actually not, my question is what other districts are doing, I'm, I'm focused on us, and I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking about what that looks like, and it looks like, you know, there may be board members that come, and they're new to the board, and, but yet they have ideas, and they have energy, and, but I mean, you're going to have to get four people to, you know, line up with you, and I don't know, this seems like a lot of, this isn't, this seems like a solution for a problem that's not really there.
What, what I'd like to see is language that recognizes the, the need to prioritize, but yet does not limit, I, I, you know, personally believe that individual board member should be able to have something on the agenda, but there is a practicality to it, and, and I don't know how we balance those things, I, I don't want to limit anybody, you know, now in the future, who is elected independently to, to bring something forward, I think your point as far as, you know, and we've already heard that in, in recent months here, ideas that, you know, a lot of us say, geez, why didn't I think of that, you know, coming up, that, that happens. At the same time, we don't want to be here till three in the morning, you know, with, with that, so, I mean, we need the wisdom of Solomon here to find that balance, but there, there has to be that vehicle to prioritize, but at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to see any limitation on any individual board member's ability, call it right, and say duty, to bring forward an agenda item, if they feel it's to the benefit of the school district.
Okay.
Christina?
Go ahead.
Do we have any guidelines right now, if I have an agenda item that I suggest to you, and you say, okay, I'm going to take that in consideration, do we have any guidelines for how that goes moving forward, in terms of you then letting me know, as a board member, where that is going, either on the agenda or where the vision is, where that's going to go down the line?
Nothing.
For writing?
Nothing in writing.
Right, well, no, you have to, the president must put it on, right? Or you have, you have, you may place it on the agenda. I mean, I've, I've made agenda requests before where I've, you know, said, while I'm, you know, while I'm being polite and say, request is the word that makes sense, just to clarify, I'm exercising my right in policy, and I am placing this item on the agenda. Now, I think there've been times, I think there's discretion for when, I think there's, you know, as far as next week, I think there's some, there's probably some cases, or there's some parliamentary procedures that could be used to dispose of requesting the same, the same or substantially the same item over and over again, I would think, you know, that could be, there's probably other ways of dealing with that, but right now, what we're, what we're doing is we're, we're getting rid of one board member can put an item on the agenda as written, and replacing it with, if the president says no, you have to convince a majority of the board for it to even be heard, and that's, I'm not okay with that.
I can share it from a, from a practical point of view, with my own experiences, both in, in bringing something forward and then responding to, there have been times, and I'll speak about bringing things forward or asking for an agenda item, when a response has been that, well, you know, what are you looking for, just, you know, help me understand, and then being given more information that really satisfied what I was looking for. In other words, I want to talk, I want to talk about the things that are, that the Woods teachers are manufacturing, okay, well, you know, actually, we've got that information already, we, you know, we can put it on there as an agenda item, but does this satisfy your need? And in some cases, it has. Other times where, and I'm thinking of a specific item that was, that was brought forward recently, we'd like to have an agenda item about such and such, knowing that such and such was on the docket for a board presentation two months hence, so to have that discussion with the board president about, you know, what, what are you looking for there, it's not to limit anybody's ability to put it on, but, you know, there may be some other extenuating circumstances that can be clarified through conversation. Ultimately, I, I do think that everyone should have that ability to put something on there, but, you know, what's your purpose of having it on there? Is it to gain information, maybe that information's already there, or it's scheduled for something else?
Sure, and I, can I add something? I, I, I completely agree with you, and I understand what you're saying, but it, it still seems a little bit not clear to me, and I'm new here, so I'm starting at zero on exactly what I need to do and what the process is for getting an agenda item on, because I have suggested, I sort of like started to think, like, I, what about this item, and I don't know what that means moving forward, because I don't, I don't underst- I don't know what the process is, so if that means that that's a conversation, that's an onboarding conversation, perhaps that is, but I, obviously, I agree with you that all those things are taken into consideration.
Just as a follow-up to Dave's comment, it actually states that a particular item of business on the agenda for a particular meeting, it doesn't say it's not going to happen, it just says that it's not going to happen at that particular meeting, and I think to your point, that, you know, if something is already scheduled for two months out, then it makes more sense to cover it there, or if you've got the information that you need, it doesn't have to appear at all. I don't think it's meant to dissuade somebody from putting something on the agenda, I think it's when it appears on the agenda, not that it does.
Although it says you need a, a majority, I mean, it is stating that you need, basic people have to go in and vote to actually sometimes move forward.
It just says that that member can then push it for the next, and have them commit to a particular meeting, it doesn't say...
Yeah, but it's, it does say the board can decide when, if at all, the issue in question will be calendared, or, maybe if we got rid of if at all.
Get, get lose if at all, and then you've got the...
Which one are you, where are you?
B.
B, the last sentence.
So, it's B.
Two B?
Two B, so the board as a whole...
Yeah, yeah, that's still very possible, we not have...
When the issue in question will be.
Oh, get rid of if at all, yeah.
Right.
Although I don't know if, see, number two would still allow the board to, the board as a whole to...
So, having heard your concerns that you don't want the board president to be the veto essentially of a board member's ability to place something on the agenda, let me go back and revise one seventy-one point two, because it still does include important considerations as to timing and that sort of thing, that the board president already is taking into account when board members are making that request.
I don't, I don't think the individual board member gets to have it whenever they want, and if it were, if it, but it does, but it does include the, with that if at all, it does include the board as a whole can just not even hear it.
So, I will revise this.
Is this specific to just open session? Does this also include closed session items?
This would include all, all board meetings, yep.
But closed session can only be held on specific items.
Well, under the law.
I can't put anything I want on a closed session, it has to, has to follow the, fairly narrow scope.
I would veto that.
Is that in here?
No.
Brenda?
So, in thinking through this, I guess, I'm, I'm thinking back to the, again, that we don't want our board meetings lasting until three in the morning, we also want to make sure that what we're asking administration to spend their time doing in preparation for board meetings is going to further, you know, the goal and strategic direction of the board. So, when I look at this, I would, if I had a requ- and I'm just talking about, this is a hypothetical, that, how I would handle this, if I had a request for something that, that, that didn't feel like, I mean, it violated what I just said, it... I mean, it violated what I just said, it, you know, was, was not, not worth the enormous amount of time that it's going to take to prepare for an agenda item, then I personally would bring that to the board, because I wouldn't wanna make that decision. But I don't know if that's, you know, that's just what I would do, to say, okay, here's a request, here's the time it's going to take, does the whole board want our administration spending this time on that? But I don't think that's, that's in here, because for me, I wouldn't wanna make that decision by myself. I mean, I do that a lot, where I'm, you know, asked to make a decision, I'm not comfortable without the board's, the board's input as a whole. So, this policy doesn't prevent me from doing that, but we don't need specific language to allow that to happen, because that's what's already in here.
Well, what you've described there, you haven't vetoed it going on the agenda.
Right.
If the agenda's there, then it's up to the board to decide whether or not this is something that, advances what the, the purpose of the, of the district.
Right, but what I would do is violating what, whatever, with, what we're trying to take away is what I'm saying. So, right now, we're saying we don't want it to come to a board vote about an agenda item, that anybody should have the right to do that, and I'm just saying, you know, as, as a matter of practice, I would want the board to, I wouldn't wanna make the decision. I, I wouldn't wanna put that on the agenda without the rest of the board knowing the enormous amount of work that this is going to take, and is it worth it to us to have that on the agenda?
Well, I could see there being times, I could see there being times where I would honor, I would want a fellow board member's request for an agenda item, no matter how wacky to be honored. However, I might, I might choose during the course of that agenda. I mean, that doesn't mean that the, you know, if it's clearly a motion that's not likely to enjoy board support, the administration doesn't have to prepare it for hours, they could say, you could say, yep, Andrew, your, your agenda item, what are you even talking about? And then the board could have more of a chance to weigh in, as that, well, my agenda item is I wanna, I wanna report about the precise amounts of the wood and the birdhouse project and everything. Then the board could say, no, we're not, you're not spending that kind of time on it, but Andrew, anything else you wanna say about it, it's your, because it's your. I don't think it's, I don't think, I mean, yes, administration prepares well for agenda items, but I don't know, they, they don't have to have a full report to every agenda, especially an initial hearing of something, right?
Which is what we just did with something at our last meeting, I can't remember what it was. We just had a conversation without anybody preparing anything.
That's what we've been doing actually in my report, is adding topics of discussion, general discussion, without a lot of work. I think that the caution in that, though, is sometimes there's, there, your takeaway at the end, I think that as, as we move forward, I think there needs to be probably deeper discussion as to next steps, because there are wonderful, wonderful things out there to talk about that improve education. A lot of research, supported different initiatives and things. And I think that that's the piece, and, you know, as, as people are out there and everyone has their, their understanding of great initiatives, that the opportunity to bring forward great ideas all the time, it, it really goes back to capacity around administration to deliver all of the things, because I, you know, I, I've yet to have a discussion on any items here that weren't worth our time, you know, to bring forward. It's just a question of where the priority, it goes back to where the priorities are. So, maybe that's a, a further follow-up in later, you know, when you dive deeper into whatever the topic is. But that's what we've been doing, is bringing them forward in that report, without a lot of preparation, giving people an opportunity to at least open the discussion.
Can I add to that, Michelle? I think for me, I, having that transparency of this is, this, over the next six months, these are our priorities, this is what we're doing, here's kind of an outline of what our, I don't, that would at least allow, for me, when I'm thinking about agenda items, to look forward and say, when would be, when do I feel like it would be an appropriate time to bring this up? And then having a dialogue, rather than sort of feeling like I'm shooting in the dark.
And typically, when we do the teaching and learning reports, and they talk about what's next and what's coming, there should be a document, just, I don't even know if you have it yet, that others had, that John had laid out the month-by-month reports.
Did he share that?
I thought he did, but if not, to your point, really, really important, absolutely.
Yeah, and our monitoring reports, maybe.
But if, yeah, I mean, if there's things that are already existing that I can, I mean, it doesn't pay anything new, but that would just, yeah.
It makes really good sense, and that's, and that's why it's important, though, for.
So, I'll take this back and I'll, I'll make the revisions consistent with the discussion.
So, it would be to preserve that an individual can put an agenda item on, but not necessarily exactly when?
Correct, and that if, and if an individual puts an agenda item on, that would create considerable work for staff, there is no expectation that staff would be required to prepare.
Yeah.
A report.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Sorry, not to beat the agenda discussion with, you know, not to get into, can I ask one other question about this? So, we have our agendas, they're beautiful, I know you all spend a lot of time on them, they're very detail-oriented, I appreciate all the hard work that goes into it and the time. Is, is there any legal reason why we can't simplify them for our public that are coming in? Because I find them to be very heavy, there's a lot of jargon, there's a lot of text, and if you're coming in as a layperson and you're trying to follow along, it can be challenging. So, I just didn't know if there was a legal reason why we couldn't explore that. And I don't wanna get into the weeds, I'm just curious, that's my only question.
We've actually gotten the opposite request of being told we're not being transparent. But, yes, we have to, the public meetings law requires you to put enough detail in your agenda so that the public can reasonably rely on that information to know what you're going to be discussing at your meetings. The jargon that I think you're referring to is the jargon for the closed session, and that language is what is required under the law.
I understand that, I mean, I think the average person reads at a fifth grade level. If we want to engage our public in dialogue to come to the meetings, this is, I'm just, this is my concern, to come in, why is nobody coming, why? People are intimidated by these documents, and I think that it is, I think there's opportunity to still be transparent and to still be clear about what the, what the board is covering, but just to take that into consideration and realize that these documents are very intimidating to people if you don't have a legal mind and you don't have an idea of where it's going. So, that was my only.
So, I'd suggest if you have, if you do have suggestions to talk, Sandy prepares the agenda every week and.
You're talking about the agenda, or are you talking about?
You're talking about this?
Talking about, yes, those, yes.
So, if you have suggestions, we're.
But there's no legal reasons why they have to be exactly the same for what we're seeing and like what people are coming in and following?
They do need to be the same.
Well, there could be, there could be, there could be an additional, there could be a summary. In addition.
I don't wanna put more work on you, Sandy, I'm just thinking about, again, people being able to come in and follow what we're doing.
I, we'd be happy to have a conversation.
Okay.
Okay, 181, Rules of Order. Updated to reflect the board's current practice of not strictly adhering to Robert's Rules of Order, so as to allow for informality in conducting its meetings, which is provided for in Robert's Rules for Small Boards. So, we, we do not strictly follow Robert's Rules, but we do follow them to the best of our ability, and this policy recognizes that any misapplication of or failure to precisely follow Robert's Rules standing alone is, should not be construed to render any decision made by the board to be void, voidable or otherwise invalid.
No.
All right, here comes the parliamentary law, Chunky. So, this is going to sound really dumb, but I, just for my sanity, is there a way to take out the, that you mentioned, the 10th edition? Can you take that out of things, because it's not the current edition? And Robert's Rules itself allows it, allows it to be cited in bylaws or policies as Robert's Rules of Order, without having to have the edition number on there? So that every time I see 10th edition, I don't just go on one of my parliamentary rants?
Well, that would be for the board, Noah, because that's already in the existing policy, so that question would be directed toward the board.
But it actually says in, it actually, it actually says in the 11th edition that earlier editions aren't. It's probably cleaner to just say Robert's Rules of Order newly revised, right?
Or current edition?
Current edition.
For you guys to decide?
Current edition.
Do we have to even have an edition in that?
You can just say Robert's, because Robert's Rules itself says you can just cite it as Robert's Rules, with the understanding that that means it's the current edition. So, I would just suggest we strike newly revised 10th edition.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. 183, Voting Method.
Did we skip quorum?
Did I skip one? I didn't see.
182 is missing, okay, no revisions are being suggested to 182. I will make sure that we add that back to the packet for.
That defines.
That's a quorum policy?
It just defines quorum, that no suggested changes are being added.
That's, that's defined for us by the state, right?
Correct.
All right, but we'll put that back in.
I'll put that in there, I'm sorry.
183, Voting, Voting Method.
Policy 183 was updated to provide further clarity regarding acceptable methods of voting at Board of Education meetings.
I could see something weird happening, but it's covered, it's covered by the fact that a single member can demand a roll call vote, so.
And that's the law?
It is.
Yep.
On anything.
Correct.
Can you give an example of that, just?
Yeah, so like, someone, are, are secret ballot votes illegal, except in a couple of very rare? Okay, so they're illegal, I guess I was thinking mostly of that, but a state law would cover an attempt to try to do that anyways, so.
Motions were, I'll, when we go to adjourn, we don't do a roll call. Sandy says all those in favor, and then it's a voice vote of A or N.
But you're asking, for an example, about who would call a roll call vote, ask for a roll call vote?
Like, anyone could just do it, so.
Yeah, so it's not really a problem, yeah. I guess, I guess someone makes a, yeah, someone, there's a voice, they take a quick, a quick voice vote to make no changes to the woodworking requirement, and someone wants to put everyone on the record, so they say a call, roll call vote, just as clear.
Okay, all right.
If the only time we don't do roll call quickly is adjournment.
Pretty rare currently anyways, we just assume.
And approving minutes. And assuming the two times we do.
All right, anything else? 184.
184 was revised to provide further clarity regarding the purpose of the minutes of a Board of Education meeting as well as the public's right to access those minutes.
Questions?
Well, implementation, room and two B, to written copy shall be sent to each, does that assume that electronic is written? Okay.
Yes.
Other questions on this? Okay, move that forward. 187, Public Participation at School Board Meetings.
This policy was just updated to reflect the formatting updates.
Now, we have a, we have a motion related to this that was postponed to December so that if enacted, may amend policy 187, is that?
That would be correct.
And that's, that's scheduled for December.
Yes.
So, this, we can, we can pass this and it doesn't change that something has, has been set on the December meeting.
Brenna?
But this isn't that prescriptive, this policy.
It is not, I would suggest if you wanna be as descriptive as our discussion was at the previous meeting, we do a rule that would really be the implementation of the policy.
Because this pretty much just lets us decide how we wanna do it in forum, which.
Correct.
Again, you know, we can decide how we wanna do it as our current board, but I don't know, we should decide in perpetuity, hell, well, of course, they can change the policy anyway, but, I mean, this gives us flexibility, this current policy.
I just wasn't sure if there's anything in that motion that might be contrary to the policy.
I don't think so.
No? All right, anything else? Okay, Participating Via Technology.
Yes, so the last time the 100 series was revised, I'm guessing this was not an issue, but we have had board members needing to participate via technology. WSB strongly recommends to have a policy in place prior to any participation via technology. So, this policy really puts into place what we've already been doing here in the district with respect to board members who have participated via technology.
Any questions? Okay, then move that forward, and then we have Student Government 441.1.
Yep. This policy has been suggested to be revised with respect to the role and responsibility of the student representative to the school board. The proposed revisions were reviewed by board representatives, the executive director of secondary, the coordinator of our district co-curricular programming, and the ICSC advisor.
So, right now, we have the ICSC representatives, we have a very clear, very clear procedure that we've had for base, basically forever. I think 1981 was when the ICSC started. At first, they only participated in regular board meetings, and then the committee meetings, which are now the work sessions, were added. They can, student reps participate in the open sessions, they can't participate in the closed sessions. We never, that was never written down, and it should be, and it is now. I have a, I have a suggested amendment that I'll pass around here and explain. My, my concern is that, my concern is in, primarily in two implementation, two C. A new, a new situation is created here in student representatives' roles and responsibilities that opens some doors to take things in an open meeting, in open session, and allow the, the board to cut off student participation in them. We've, we've never done it before, it's never been a problem before, and I just don't, I can't think of any time where I would be okay with, with that. What I, what I changed here was simply, they shall be eligible to participate in discussion during open session, and there will be no participation or attendance by student representatives in closed and executive sessions. Also, in C, took out, they can put items on their agenda under the interest of the student council report, subject to the discretion of the president and superintendent. I would suggest we take that out, but leave. I would suggest we take that out, but leave in accordance with board policy and rule. And I also took out in the areas of direct student concern. I don't know what that means. I don't know what, what we do isn't direct student concern. I mean, I guess Noah's comment about Robert's rules and having the wrong addition is, since it's internal board matters, probably pretty far from direct student concern. But we would have all missed it if he didn't catch it. So I just, I, I'm thinking maybe this was model language or something. But I just don't want to open new doors to cut off input, especially where it said certain other areas not, the board, the board shall decide the extent of student participation in its deliberations. And then, yeah, I just don't, I just don't think the board should be able to shut down the student reps. If it's not appropriate for the student reps, then I would argue it's not appropriate for the public. And if it's appropriate, maybe for a closed session at that point.
I agree.
Yep.
Other than that, I am, I am glad it was clarified, because the old, the old policy said there will be board student reps. The rule says a lot more, but the, the policy did not, did not say enough, and something, something needed to be there. I would just prefer that it would say, there's, there's also, again, not that, not that Michelle would do this, but this could be interpreted as the, there was something in A that suggests that the superintendent could feel like dramatically overhauling how ICSC works, just by himself.
That's currently in the policy.
I don't.
That's the language of the current policy. That, that was taken directly from the current policy.
Okay. I don't think that's a good idea either. I mean, as specified in board policy and rules, we have a detailed rules. And I, I just think this is, covers it better. Other, other districts might have stuff that's more limiting to students. But we have a very good tradition of broad, broader student input at meetings. Ed?
I'm fine with everything C on down. I just have a question with implementation B. The new language, the language you're proposing, specified in board policy rules. Is that saying that we have to develop more, new policy and rules specific to the organization?
I don't think so, because there are, there is a rule.
The rule 441.1 is their bylaws, so that would specify.
Oh, it's already in policy.
Yep.
It's in rule. So then we're referring to the rule. Okay. So if the, if the, theoretically, if the council wanted to do something way different, they could propose a change which the board could decide to adopt into rule or not adopt into rule.
Again, I don't speak for the whole council, but I think that these changes should probably be shared to the council. Just in case they have any question, like, not these changes, but like this proposed policy and the changes that come with it should probably be presented to the whole council, just in case there are any questions about it. Because it affects that, because it affects that council so directly. Of course, I don't speak for the council, but I thi, I think that that would be a good thing. And I would talk about it this month, but this month our agenda is full, and it looks like it'll be that way next month too. So I, so I think that, when, when are these changes going to be approved?
Likely October 15th unless an airpost phone. So we could, we could provide, I mean, it's, the board's prerogative to, to change it. But I would assume if ICSC had a concern about it, they could put it on the ICSC report, and then it would, we could talk about it then.
Well, right, but my concern is about the council seeing it, which wouldn't happen. And because the October agenda has two presentations on it, which take up more than half the time. And the agenda item requests have been denied for October and pushed to November. This can't actually make it on before the board approves it.
I, can I offer something?
Yeah.
I, I think the, I, I understand your concern, Noah. The, the policy really is about what the, the board deciding what the role of the ICSC representative is. Your bylaws are what the student council decide with respect to how you function as an ICSC. So the, the policy is, is the board and the role of the representative with respect to the, the board. And then your bylaws are your internal functioning of your ICSC.
And that's the Board of Education policy and rule?
The existing 411.1 rule is.
Right, but when I'm looking at C 2B, I'm looking at Andrew's document, it's easier. At the end of that, it says, in accordance with Board of Education policy and rule.
Correct.
And it's, it's, it's different up top, so I'm just, but we're talking about the same thing.
4, 441.1 rule.
Right, but I mean, in, in 2B, it says specified, and this is your words, Andrew's. I think you're referring to the same thing, that they should match.
Oh, rules and rules.
Well, it says Board of Education policy and rule, and yours says board policy and rules.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So they just, you're talking about the same thing, right?
I'm talking about the same thing, yeah.
So, okay, so then I do have a question about the C 2B, the agenda items. And I'm wondering if we can see the, are the bylaws attached to here at all?
They're online. I, I didn't attach them, but they're, they are online.
Oh, they're underneath the, we can go online, look at it?
Yep, they're, they're an actual board rule.
Okay, because I'm just wondering, what, well, actually, you can probably tell me. What is, what is, what is, what do the bylaws say about putting agendas on their intercity student council report?
It said, yep, there's language. Through the president, the council may place items for discussion within the school board agenda under the Agenda section reserved for the Inter-City Student Council Report.
That's all it says? Through the president?
Through the president.
Okay.
And again, we're not bringing forward, as you know, as a committee, when we met, we were not bringing forward changes to the rule because that's their, it's their document.
Okay.
To your point of this being a board, these changes being a board thing, yes, they are. And I'm not implying that the council can veto it because it is a board, the board can do this with or without council approval. I'm not saying this is subject to council approval. It's not. It's a board, it's a purely board thing. However, I think it would be, I think it would be preferable for, to at least get its way out to council members. And I see now that that prob, that can't happen at a physical ICSC meeting this month. But I think an email would be nice, just to see, are there any concerns you guys have about it? Or something of that nature. And if I tried to do that, I'd be accused of.
Well, it's, well, you may or may not, but I, I guess, I think you're, it's a fair point that the board, it's a fair point. I think that if we're doing something that affects ICSC, even if we do this version, which really is just clarifying what happens now, does it, is it, is this an emergency? Not really, could, you know, maybe this one we do in, maybe just this one we do in November? That way, just in case the council has questions or someone wants to speak in open forum, they can. Michelle?
Just a quick question. Now, Noah, if Jamie were here, could the two of you discuss that? And couldn't Jamie send something out? As the, you know, the president?
Yeah, and I actually do plan on talking with her about just sending this stuff out, yes.
But it is kind of short. I mean, it's, it's, the timing is, the timing, the turnaround timing is quite short. And the, you know, agendas are, are full. So if this, maybe if this isn't, I guess I, I would like to do this. I would like to do it this way, but I don't think there's any emergency created by waiting for just this one till, till the November meeting to finalize it.
When you say the agendas are full, what agenda are you talking about?
Our agenda, not your agenda.
Your Sunday evening agenda?
Yeah, our Sunday.
Okay, we're meeting with you guys on the 11th.
I know, so.
Could this just be presented to?
On the 11th as an informational item?
On the 11th?
It's the quarterly meeting with the ICSC. Can't this, right.
And then you can, and then if.
Can't this just be, so that we can stay with our schedule?
And then if, that gives you the 15th, if you want to speak to it, either through open forum.
Good catch, yeah. I don't claim to.
You got the 10th edition, I get this one, so good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't.
We can do it with no discussion, so that it doesn't take the place of what was on the agenda. I wouldn't want us to have a 30-minute discussion about something that was plopped on their agenda at the last minute. Right, but I mean, if you can, you and Jamie can prepare it.
I think the intent would be it's an introduction, and then the 15th would be the opportunity, probably. Although we've, I'm not really into.
Because you would actually be giving the ICSC report before we.
Prior to our vote on this, so.
Yeah, all right. I will, I'll, I'll talk with Jamie about that. Of course, I, I represent myself.
But it is, it's a board, you know, it's a board meeting too. And this is when the board thinks it makes the most sense to show it to ICSC, so we'll just do that.
Good, thank you. So my to-do list is, there was the change in the legal council policy, and then the revisions to 171.2. And I will include in the next, we'll have to include in the next meeting, the policy on 182 quorum. And then there were a few other minor changes, but really it was 171.2 that needed the larger changes. Okay, thank you.
And then, anything, anything else on that? All right, and then closed, closed session, that is still scheduled, correct?
You have to read that.
Yep, just last two times, I didn't have to read it, so. All right. I move that the board convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1M, considering financial, medical, social, personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon their reputation. Any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations to wit personnel matters, the meeting will begin in open session. In view of the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law, the board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session. Second?
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dor?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Can Gina cross the hall?
At this moment.
Please pull my plug.
That's right, this is not just a loss.